It's seven o'clock and we're going to start the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any walk-ins this evening?
Yeah.
Mr. Burbine?
Good evening. Anne Burbine, 10 Penechris Road. Just to let you know, I attended a meeting last week up in Cohasset concerning the Route 3A corridor, which back in the day when I was on social coalition, there was a discussion through Cohasset about doing refurbish or whatever you want to call it from the train station up in Cohasset down to the Cohasset line in Situate. And I said, "Let's put Henry Turner Bailey Road on that." And they did. So this project will take approximately five years. 2025 is their end date. And when all is said and done, there will be a sidewalk that will go from the golf station down Route 3A to Henry Turner Bailey Road, and they have agreed to swing it around the corner and go to Ganna pasture so that there will be a connectivity to North Situate. And also, there will be a light at Henry Turner Bailey Road.
Good.
Great.
Full stop?
Full... Yes. And also, they are going to redo Beechwood so that there is green to go left in both directions, one lane north, one lane south with the turning lanes. They're going to have turning lanes further down to really try to curb traffic. There will be some wetland replication where the sign used to be for the chamber. So this is a very promising project. It's been in the works since 2013, but as we know, God love Mass Highway, they're slower than a herd of turtles. But money is available. It is funded. They've... They're at the 25% design stage. Someone from Patrick Kearney's office was there. Joan Machina was at the... At this meeting. So it's very positive. And frankly, I'm really pleased that this is going to happen, and I thought I would share that with you all.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you for going.
Well...
For all the meetings you've gone to on this particular issue.
Well, I love traffic.
Can I ask you one question about that?
Yes.
We all know what it's like when you're heading south and you get south of Beechwood Street. There's two lanes, and then they merge to one, and everyone's racing.
I know.
What are they going to do about that?
What they're going to do is, there will be, as you're heading south, there will be a left lane only at the stoplight. And as you go down, there will be one lane, okay? With an island so that you can't scoot out of the gas station to take a left. And as you go further down, they're going to put in a sidewalk so that there's amenities. There will only be one lane, and as the middle lane will be a turning.
It's going to be turning like up at Derby?
Yes. Turn right, turn left. So that it won't be the free-for-all that it is right now. They have had 20 accidents at Beechwood in the past three years. It is a very, very dangerous intersection, exceedingly so.
His husband.
So... And so is Henry Turner Bailey. When somebody pulls out to go left, you can't see if you want to go right because they're too far out. And that's really a tough, tough intersection. So there will be, by the time I retire, there'll be a light there.
The Burbine light? The Burbine light?
No.
So are you a de facto liaison right now to South Shore Coalition because we don't?
No. No, I just... I go to enough meetings, dear. I was chair for a long, long time.
Oh.
So, no. I'm sort of... They have their meetings at 1:00 in the afternoon, and I'm one of these people that work for a living.
Anne, thanks for your effort.
Thank you.
That's great.
It's really going to be improvement to that area.
It will be. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Anne.
Let's go over.
Thank you. Phyllis Carlberg, 26 Hughes Road. I have one thing on my mind this evening, and that's to get a good night's sleep. After being up for two nights with the turbine extremely noisy, as noisy as it's ever been in the last bunch of years, the last two nights, not last night, but the night before, I called the Board of Health and left a message at 1:30 in the morning after listening to it for a couple of hours. Every time I've called, I've listened to it at least two hours. My question tonight is to you people, would you please, no matter what the reports come back, consider shutting it down in the winds from seven to nine or 10 miles an hour from the southwest breeze over the summertime so that the people up in the Gilson Road, Third Cliff area can get some sleep? I mean, unless you come and listen to it, you really don't understand what the sound is really like. And, yep, I speak for the rest of our neighborhood because nobody wants to complain, you know? But there's... It's not just a few of us. It's a bunch of people up in that neighborhood. My next question is, if I am awake this evening, which one of you would like the phone call? Because I will be making a call, so I'll give you a choice which one's going to get it.
I'll take it. All right. I'd like to talk to you, Phyllis.
I'll be happy to talk to you.
Yeah, because I'm going to be in bed in about a half an hour.
So where do you live?
I'm up on Hughes Road. My... I back up to the condos at the Situate Country Club.
Okay.
I've lived there for 32 years prior to the turbine going up. My specific problem is, my house comes out this way, the other side of the house comes this way, and my bedroom window is up in the corner, and it bellows right into that corner. So when we were doing the testing, I offered my property because I figured I hear it a lot, I complain a lot, I get it a lot. I was out each night with the people that were out doing the testing. The one time, the one person was not in the same position that, you know, and I'm like, you know, "All the other stuff was done up this way. Would you please just move up this way so we have the continuity?" But it was interesting. One night, up until from like eight to 10, it was really noisy. They got there at 2:00, and it wasn't loud at all.
Hmm.
So, you know, I know it's a variable thing, and as long as the wind is blowing, it's not bad. But it's in that low mile an hour speed that it's... It's really annoying.
So what do we shut it down now? Because we shut it from May to...
But you didn't do that last summer.
No, we didn't.
Well, it was from a certain direction.
Yeah. It's got to be from a certain direction and a certain... And it sounds like those parameters are kind of what we are looking at. I think it's... Kevin, do you know off the top of your... We'll look at it. It's something like, maybe it's... Maybe it's 10 miles an hour and not like the seven that you're saying. I'll look at it.
Maybe it needs to be lower.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda for the next walking meeting.
Yeah, it is. If you want to come to the next meeting. I also got a report incoming in.
We'll be happy to, but where it was fresh on my mind today.
So what did you say? Five to nine, Phyllis?
I'm sorry?
What's the...
The wind speeds?
Seven and nine.
It's... Yes. About seven to nine is really where it is the loudest.
And it's not the turning of it, it's the...
It's the turning of the paddles.
But not the...
You know, not...
You don't want to go...
Oh, no. Well, oh, but listen to that because as it's pivoting, it's screeching like crazy, you know? But, I mean, I find some of these things interesting because it's a timing thing. So one day when I was walking the dog, I'm going, "Oh, my God, it's turning," you know? So I watched the pivot because I could tell that... You could see that it was starting to turn. But it's one of those things that you have to... The timing is important, you know? But...
Well, let us look and see what the parameters are. I know it... I think it starts in May, though. I mean, usually it's not this morning, March.
Yeah, but I thought that this past summer, you didn't shut it down, and that's where the problem was.
We've done it every...
Yeah.
Every summer for the last three or four years.
But it met those certain conditions.
Okay. Well, that might be the difference, but I thought that it was...
And we may... It may not go into effect until 10:00 at night or something. It may be...
And that's fine with me, too. It's the, you know, 11 to... And then you get up this morning, and at 7:30, the thing's shut down.
It's watching you.
Thank you.
So sorry. Thank you.
Talk to you in the middle of the hour.
Okay. She'll be up. I don't know, probably.
Any other walk-ins? Okay. Moving right along, we will go with the report of the town administrator. Jim?
Start tonight with COVID-19. Where we at? What's going on? I'm sure the board is aware the governor has declared a public health emergency in the Commonwealth this afternoon. The risk for coronavirus in the Commonwealth has been low. He specifically asked that today, and he said, "At this point, it's increased." He didn't say "increased" by watch, but it is increased. The number of presumptive cases of COVID-19 has doubled in one day, more than doubled from 41 to 92. Presumptive cases, one with individual that's tested positive at the state level but has not received confirmation yet from the CDC. I talked to Drew about it. Very confident that the state results are correct, that these will become full-blown COVID-19 cases. The governor has encouraged communities at this point to cancel large public gatherings but has not ordered us to do so yet. We have a conference call tomorrow with DPH. We're going to see how that goes. Based upon that call, it would be my desire to have the board of selectmen ready for a meeting on Thursday to decide how you want to proceed with the parade. We met today with the parade organizers. Before the governor spoke, we were in the wait to see what we wanted to see what the governor said, and do this DPH call tomorrow and see if we get some more definitive recommendations from the Commonwealth. I think that's the one thing that's really frustrating us at this point. We've talked to the state, they said, "Well, it's up to you." Our point is, you're the experts. You know, Drew's a fantastic health agent. He's not an expert on infectious diseases. We need more definitive guidance as to what we should do as opposed to, "It's up to the local board of health, it's up to the community." So we're hoping the state starts taking those steps, and maybe this call tomorrow will be one where they do. Right now, Boston, Worcester, Holyoke, and Lards have all canceled their parades at this point. Abington is still on. I talked to him late this afternoon. They are still on at this point. Here in Situate, we had our meeting last week. We provided all our employees with guidance on COVID-19. We've put a link on our website on the banner for residents that can click on that and go to the DPH website, the CDC website to get guidance. For the past 10 days, it's been the same thing your grandmother told you when you were a kid. Wash your hands, gobble your mouth when you cough. If you're sick, go to bed and don't get anybody else sick. That has ramped up today. We haven't gotten the guidelines yet, but we do expect those guidelines to come out probably tomorrow. Social distancing at this point is also recommended. That is, if you are in a place with a lot of people, try to maintain a distance of about six feet to the best of your ability. And again, wash your hands, cough into your elbow. I mean, it could get to that point where we're going to have to get relief from the state and hope a meeting will...
To have a town meeting, too. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that actually could be a town meeting with no people. I could be okay with that.
No, you wouldn't.
Pretty great town meeting. We'd have to consent to Jen for the whole warrant. But, you know, these...
Bring your articles forward.
The fact that it doubled in one day, I think we're going to continue to see that grow. So we'll be keeping an eye on that. We have wooded what are called hydrostatic misting machines for the buildings. They have machines that spray disinfectant. Think of the disinfectant as being magnetized so no drop falls on each other. When you spray it in a room, it does the surface, it does the sides, it does the bottoms. It does everything in that room. We've ordered one for every school and then several for the municipal departments. We're expecting some to come in this week, the balance to come in next week, and we will start doing some preventative disinfecting about buildings when those come in.
Did... May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Did you get confirmation that the two are going to come and deliver this week? Because...
Well, there's two different ones. We go to the hand ones, they're going to be later.
Right. So are the big machines still...
The misses, I saw the guy today, yesterday.
Because things are...
He said, "We should have them by the end."
Things are just changing so fast as far as supply. Okay.
So we're not going to get them all right away, but we're hoping at least have a couple and we can shift around them.
Good. Thank you for doing that early.
If we order them now, we'll be able to get them.
Right.
You know, we had a couple meetings, we talked to the government on the situation. We didn't order them because we needed them, but when we need them, we will be able to get them. We'll have them, particularly in the schools in the future with outbreak of a cold virus and outbreak of a flu virus. We'll be able to use those to disinfect the schools on an ongoing basis in any type of illness situation. So it's something we should have. We'll get them, and then we'll start making use of them. Finally, all town buildings have been equipped with hand sanitizers. I know the school is in the process of doing that. All town departments have been issued sanitizer and wipes. And I met with Kevin Kelly today, and I've instructed him to have all the janitors several times a day now wipe down all doors, railings, and other multi-use public services several times a day. So we'll start doing that tomorrow. In the meantime, cover your mouth when you cough, wash your hands, and if you're sick, stay home. Do not go to the doctor, do not go to the hospital. Call them, talk to them, and they will give you instructions as to what to do. The only silver lining right now is this does not seem to be a virus that is having a large impact on children. They don't seem to be getting it, and those that have gotten it are very mild. However, as with the regular flu, the population at risk, the elderly, and people with existing health conditions, they are still very much at risk from the COVID-19. The other recommendation today from the governor was, if there are large events, if you are over 65, you should not go. If you are under 65 and have someone of that age in your house, you should not go. And if you have an underlying health condition, you should not go to large events. That's where we are right now. We changed quite a bit just today, and we're expecting to continue changing. We're about as ready as we can be at this point. We're going to have the DPH call tomorrow, and then we'll ask the board to make a decision on the parade.
So at the meeting, Sean was there, and I was on the phone. We spoke pretty candidly about it, I think, and talked about all different positions. At this point, there was no real reason to cancel it today other than tomorrow, and we just thought so much more information is going to be coming in in the next couple of days. But I think everyone was prepared to go in that direction if we need to. I don't think I'm speaking under. So we're going to... They're going to reconvene Wednesday after they hear from the call, and then we're going to figure out when we can get together if... Unless the parade organizers choose to cancel it on their own. So they're going to think that through. We're going to hear that, and then if it comes back to us, if either the state's going to mandate it, the organizers will do something with it, or it'll come to us and we'll do something with it. So we'll hear more in the next couple of days, and then we'll decide.
Yeah, well, we'll have something else. As soon as Drew and I get off the calls tomorrow, I think we'll have something else to do.
May I ask?
Okay. Sean, did you have anything to add?
No. No, you hit it.
Well, I guess I'd just like to ask, what does Boston, Holyoke, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, know that we don't know? Or do we know something that they don't know? And I don't want to rain on anyone's parade, kah-ah, but I feel as though this is kind of an all-hands-on-deck. This is not doing this for yourself but doing it for everyone else so that... To contain the spread of it. So I personally think we should cancel it, but, you know, I'm happy to wait until Thursday, but...
Boston made the decision on their own. They didn't check with the state, they didn't check with anybody. Those are several magnitudes larger than our parade. I mean, much, much larger.
It doesn't... It doesn't matter. It's 300,000 or 300.
It does. I mean, where you're driving those people from makes a big difference. We just wanted to make sure that we had the most up-to-date information that we could have before we made a recommendation to you.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, I know the way I feel about it.
We had a 1:30 this afternoon. Based upon what we saw, it was okay. You know, we haven't seen cases jump, we haven't seen this. The state is still saying it's low. Go about your business. And then we had the governor gave his press conference at 3:30. We got the new numbers. We don't think we're going to get any... We're going to get any good news from the DPHs tomorrow.
Right.
We were hoping, again, that the state would step up and say, "Okay, we're going to talk about this," but they still leave it all in our hands.
So, Mr. Chair?
May I? I don't understand the logic of waiting a day. I, you know, I think the crisis has escalated quite a bit, as you said earlier, already double the cases. I don't think Situate is in a position to know anything more or better than all of the leading public health officials that are advising, you know, Fortune 100 companies to cancel everything. And I also think if we can give the parade organizers more time to let their vendors know that it's canceled, that they can possibly recoup some of their down payments or some money. You wait till Thursday.
We can't. We asked them that.
Well...
They want to wait. I think they're going to try and think about days to reschedule to. They just need a little time to figure out the information and figure out what the next step for them is going to be. So we... That was the decision.
Yeah, I mean, I think you should. I think, Tom, they don't think they've got any money back. The vendors have already paid. You know?
Which is unfortunate, but people are losing dollars all over the world right now.
Which is why companies are being told to do things. The state is still telling us... They're not saying cancel the parade. They haven't canceled the Bruins game or Celtics game. They're just encouraging us to do it.
Right. Well...
Now, again, as I said, they're the experts. They should be coming out and telling us to do something, but they're just encouraging it at this point.
Well, I also think we should be leaders and heed on an abundance of caution.
We will. We will. So we're going to give them a couple of days, and then we're going to get together and decide and get the health department involved as well.
So Ed knows it can go either way, and if I misspeak, jump in, Jim. But, you know, he's... He would like to have the parade. He thinks the risk is very low. Him and the organizers have worked so hard for it. So we said to him, you know, along those lines, "Can you recoup any funds?" Or "Some you can't, some you will." Drew mentioned, you know, "Those individuals, those small companies that will work with us will certainly remember that work with them in the future, whether we cancel it or postpone it." Most likely, cancel it. So they are prepared to pull the plug at the... What, Friday, you say, at the last...
Yeah, we said, "What's your address will drop dead." Friday would be the latest. I'd rather do it sooner than that.
It's good. And he's had... Let me just... I'm sorry. He's had other organizations wanting to come in, all right? Because they can't...
I'm sure.
Yeah, right. And then we talked about...
But Ed's not a public official.
Right. No, I know that. I'm just trying to speak for him because there was, you know, a bunch of us at the table. And then we talked about the crowd. You know, if we did go forward, all of a sudden, this is going to blow up to something between, you know, Situate and Southie. And he had reminded... And he and Liz said, you know, "It's happened three times in the past, and we didn't see a huge influx of folks along the parade room." But that's not to say it could not happen this Sunday. So... No, I'm not taking that position. I just was trying to speak for you.
Yeah, no, I know. I just...
And I agree with everyone.
I don't want to sound as insensitive to... About the organizers, I'm not, but I think we, as leaders, need to step up and just decide sooner rather than later.
Okay.
I have so much respect for the people that put this together and put the parade together and then know how much work it is. As far as the financial goes, the... It's out of... You know, it is what it is. And if those vendors... The money's been raised. I don't think it will impact next year because everyone knows it's not... Like, the organizers decided not to do this. This is a public health crisis. And I do think that if, you know, we're the only ones... Only game in town, that we will see a great increase of people here, which increases the risk of something, you know, somebody getting sick. But one thing that I noted in talking to folks that have canceled and other communities that canceled is, it's not about the day. It's not about the parade. Everybody can stay home that feels compromised or sick or whatever. It's about two, three, four days from now when they go, "Oh, golly, I didn't know Susie was sick." And then we have to incur the municipal costs to shut down things, clean the school. And as a community, I think Ms. Kearney's right, it's our responsibility to the Commonwealth to try to contain. It's asked of every community. And you're right, Jim, it'd be great if they made us do it.
Well, I mean, we have the conference calls at 3:00 tomorrow. If you want, or if you can post an emergency meeting tomorrow from 4:00, 4:30, the board can read by after the call and make a decision. If you want, Drew Sheil, I know everybody knows Drew, our health agent here. Drew has done an amazing job on this. Not only does he know the town departments, he's done the nursing homes in town, makes sure that they're following the correct protocol.
Thank you.
He's been right on top of this. Anytime a department gets a little... Drew was out and sitting down, and, you know...
Thank you.
So he needs a lot of... He goes through all the work he's been doing to keep me off the ledge. He was the one who helped me order those hydrostatic machines. Come into my office, we just said, "Yeah, let's..." So we got him, we got the chance. So if we can do that that way, we'll have the DPH call, we'll have all the knowledge, and then you guys can go right after that.
Yeah.
All right. Well, could I just add, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
The Biogen Conference happened a few weeks ago, and we're just feeling it now, the effects of it. That's the biggest group of people, and that happened weeks ago. So this is the problem. You don't know. You don't know where someone's coming from. You don't know if they've got someone asymptomatic with them. The children seem fine, which is wonderful. I think it's great. Unfortunately, it doesn't take much, apparently, to spread this thing. So that's why I think that in the interest of the entire public, not just Situate, in
So, that's why I think that in the interest of the entire public, not just Situate, in the interest of our whole, I hate to say, country, that, that we should bite the bullet. And I would prefer we do it now.
So, we're not leaning towards having the parade. We just told them we'd give them another day, and that's what we're going to do. Because that's what we said in the meeting, before we got all this additional information.
Okay.
So, that's, that's all we're doing. We're not, no one's making a decision to have it or not to have it. We, we spoke specifically that we're not going to be the outlier. We're not going to be the, hey, we'll be the community that has the parade. That's not, that's not what we're doing here. The public's interest and the, and the health of our citizens are, are the priority here. So, all this stuff happened this morning, prior to a lot of things happening, and we decided that we're going to wait, you know, till that time and not vote in it tonight. So.
So, who is, who is, who is the authority? Is it the Board of Health would revoke the permit?
Revoke the permit for the parade.
Revoke the permit. So, we have the right tonight to revoke the permit?
You have the menu agenda, yes. Menu agenda, put it on the agenda, and I may vote.
You can do that.
I think it's cleaner to have an emergency meeting, and have menu agenda, at least, and some notice of the emergency meeting, as opposed to no notice. Again, the parade's Sunday, so cancel it today, cancel it tomorrow, it's not going to make a difference.
What time's the call tomorrow?
Can we review availability for the emergency meeting?
I was saying.
Yeah, I was going to say, why wouldn't we have the emergency meeting after that call tomorrow?
As I said, we can do it tomorrow, 4:00, 4:30.
You're coming.
And it calls about half an hour of information, and then two hours of everybody from all across the state answering questions. So, once we get the information, I think, that we need out of it, we can, we can pop out there at maybe some 4:00, 4:30.
Yeah, we'll do it tomorrow night, because I can't do it at full time.
Okay. I'm really open, because everything on my calendar got canceled.
We can do it, we can do it at 6:00.
Because of this.
I have puberty night tomorrow, my fifth grade son, that I can't sell on the wife with him, so I have to go to that. So.
What time is that?
6:00.
It's at 7:00, so we can do it at 6:00.
I mean, we could do remote participation.
We still have to have a, you have to have a quorum of the board present.
Yeah.
I can be here at?
We'll do it at 6:00.
5:00.
Tomorrow at 6:00?
6:00.
And then we can post that immediately, and I know it's not two days, but you can do an emergency?
Yeah.
We'll do it most supposedly.
Lorraine will.
The only thing in the agenda will be the U.S. actually parade.
6:00 P.M.?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Don't want to do any more. Is that enough? Fields, real quick, the last several days were good ones on our athletic fields. We had some dry weather. The fields are turned up. We have finally been able to begin installing the base stone on the baseball field. That is huge. I know I've talked to some of the soil out there, when it gets wet, turns almost into a silt, and we can't work on it. And then it freezes, the next day it melts and gets silted again. So, we haven't been able to stop getting the stone down. We'll be doing that again tomorrow. We put extra crews on. The contractor has assured us, this is his number one priority. Whenever he has the weather, he will put crews down there. We have been working the concrete at the field, in the concession centers, will be put down tomorrow, that will be finalized. So, what'll be left over at the athletic field, the stadium field, will be the final fencing and landscaping, which we're going to do at the very end. But that field will be open for spring sports next week. Next week. So, we'll keep banging away at it. Just the weather, even though it has not been snowy, it's been rainy, it's been warm. We would have been better off with freezing cold weather, so those fields will firm up. We will go as quickly as we can without compromising the quality of the build. Today was a big day. There was a lot of trucks out there. There were a lot of guys working. Hopefully, we'll do that tomorrow, or can, Thursday. I think we're expecting some more rain on Friday, but when they get the base down, they can work it when the base is down. So, that's a good sign. Water update, very briefly. During the Council on Aging demolition project, we actually let the contractor hook up to a hydrant to use his mister to keep down the dust on the building demolition. During that two-week period, we received zero groundwater calls tapping into a hydrant. That is a very good sign. I know Kevin and the water department are very happy with that, so not done with. We're hoping that's a good sign. Finally, on the Council on Aging, we're starting the utilities layout. The ceiling demolition is complete. The foundation demolition will continue in the next week, at which point we will start the foundation and excavation for the foundation. On the back of the building, we have taken off the stairs behind the recreation apartment, and the foundation for that should stop. And then the next week, we'll put in that new handicap entrance in the back corner of the building. That is a priority. That is the first one that should be completed, is that handicap entrance in the back. That's all I have.
When's the groundbreaking again, the date?
18th.
Tomorrow, is it?
18th.
Next week.
No, 18th. Yeah, 18th. At 4:00 P.M., right?
Yeah.
Sean, anything?
No.
More?
Nope.
Karen?
Yes, Jim, who, now that the spring is coming, people are looking at trees that are, look like they're about to fall over onto the streets that are on, street, on a town property. Who do they call, and what's the, what's the process of, does someone come out and inspect it, or?
Yeah, DPW, first thing we look at, see if it's within the layout.
Yeah.
It's not within the layout, our tree. Then we make the determination. Who's the tree warden? Have a go. The tree warden will make the determination whether the tree is diseased, dangerous, needs to come down.
Microbe.
Microbe. And depending upon the tree, you have to have a public tree here to take it down. DPW handles trees.
All right. So, and if someone calls and asks, will someone get back to them to say, "No, this isn't our tree. Yes, it is our tree."
They say, "Not ours," so we're going to take it down, or it's on the list, or.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Great. All right. We'll move right along to our 7:15 discussion vote. Situate Public Schools Statement of Interest. Ron Griffin. Hey, Ron.
Hey, guys.
Hey. Ron.
This'll be a quick one.
Try to catch up on your agenda, be brief with your time. So, what you have in front of you are two statements of interest. We had this similar discussion March of last year as well. I'll take just a minute to give you a summary of the process that we've been working on regarding the Hadley and Cushing Elementary Schools. As I'm sure you know, both schools have served our community for half a century now, a little over half a century. At this time, there are a number of needs, facility needs for both of those buildings, roofs, windows, concrete, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, the list goes on. So, looking at all of those needs, we identified last year that we wanted to do some analysis, some large-scale analysis. We brought in a firm. They did a full analysis, workup of those buildings, along with the Wampe Tuck as well, which is the other oldest elementary school. It was determined, based on that analysis, that rather than trying to do all of those repairs over time, one by one, in a patchwork approach, that it's more beneficial to students, our community, and ultimately more economically and fiscally responsible to do a consolidation project. That is consolidate the two buildings and build a new one. So, what you have in front of you are two statements of interest that go forward to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. That's SOIs to the MSBA. Education loves its acronyms. And last year, we submitted those SOIs to the MSBA. We were selected as finalists. We received that notification in the summer. As finalists, we became part of what's called the Senior Study. MSBA came out to our two buildings, Cushing and Hadley, took a look at our educational plan, took a look at the, the needs of those buildings. And ultimately, our district, along with about seven or eight other districts, were analyzed based on need. While our plan was a good one, and our SOIs were strong, we were not the most urgent school. It's important to note that the MSBA has expanded their program recently to include the Boston schools as well. And so, there are a lot of schools out there that are probably more similar to what you had at the Gates a few years ago. A school that's over 100 years old, and has a list of needs that are just more significant. That's not to minimize the needs that you have at Cushing and Hadley, but the Commonwealth has to prioritize in some way, and so they do that by urgency. What we have in front of you today are the same SOIs, updated with the newest information based on any repairs or any projects that need to take place at the Hadley and Cushing. With the board's approval, we would submit those SOIs at the end of this week to the MSBA. The process would look very similar. You'd hear notification in the summer if you were selected as a finalist, part of the senior study process. That process would take place typically in the fall, September, October. If you were selected for the MSBA's funding protocol, you'd be notified by December of 2020. From there, you'd follow about a five- or six-year timeline if you're ultimately selected through feasibility, similar to what you do with the Gates project as well. That would ultimately allow you to consolidate the two buildings and open a new elementary school. So, my request to the board today is to read, as a form of vote, two unfortunately very lengthy motions, one for Cushing, one for Hadley. That's those.
Madam clerk?
May I have a question first?
Yeah.
Nothing changed from the SOIs that we submitted a year ago, right?
In spirit, they are identical. The only updates we have are changes to, you know, we made repairs on HVAC system 14, those sorts of things.
Okay, great. Just want to double check.
I'll start with Hadley. Hadley Elementary School vote resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on March 10th, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Board of Selectmen of Situate, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form to be dated April 3rd, 2020, for the Hadley Elementary School located at 72 Ann Vinyl Road, Situate, Mass, which includes the potential consolidation of elementary schools and construction of a new elementary school, and describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Board Authority in the future. Priority number five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems, and priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, region, or school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So moved. Can I do that?
Yep.
Go to the second.
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
The Cushing Elementary School vote resolved. Can I just say what I said?
Did I?
Because it's exactly the same. Having convened in the open meeting on March 10th, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, Board of Selectmen of Situate, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form to be dated April 3rd, 2020, for the Cushing Elementary School located at 1 Aberdeen Drive, Situate, Mass, which includes the potential consolidation of elementary schools and construction of new elementary school, and describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the MSBA in the future. Priority five, replacement, renovation, modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heaters, and HVAC systems, and priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and local approved requirements. And further hereby specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the MSBA in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the MSBA, or commits the city, town, region, school, district to filing an application for funding by the MSBA. So moved. Second.
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great. Anything else, Ron?
That's all. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks for trying again.
Great. Our next topic of discussion is an outdoor entertainment permit for Harvard Methodist Church events. Bob Amweg?
Yes.
Bob, how are you?
Good, good.
Good.
Thank you. I'm representing the Harvard United Methodist Church. As we did last year, we're having First Friday Fish Fries, and we have outdoor entertainment scheduled to perform at those fries. There'll be four of them, May, the first Friday of May, June, July, and September. And we're asking permission to hold those.
Great.
If there's any questions or any concerns, please.
Any questions for us?
Yeah, paperwork's all in order.
So, are they held right at the church?
Yes, it's on a church, the church parking lot.
Oh, in the back, or?
On the side.
On the side, okay.
On the side, right.
Great.
We'd like to try to move it to the front if we can get it.
And what, what type of music? Is it acoustic?
There'll be three, there's three bands that are contracted with already, a Doc Ellis Band, appropriate for the church, Three Saints and a Sinner, and Bad Life Dece.
I know who they are.
Not familiar with them.
They're pretty good.
But those are the three that we can engage so far.
Great. Just from 6:00 to 8:00?
6:00 to 8:00 on a Friday evening, yes.
Great.
And it's, we did it last year. It was well-received. We served over 150 meals.
That's great.
At each one, and we invite all of you to come.
It's a good time, you should go.
It's a nice, it's a cost-effective family event.
Great.
And it's a.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the audience? Can I have a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Bob Amweg of the Harvard United Methodist Church, located at 55 First Parish Road, for live music on May 1st, June 5th, July 3rd, and September 4th, 2020, from 6:00 P.M. to 8:00 P.M.
Yes.
Does that sound right?
Second, by Ms. Kern, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a good time.
You with me, Sinner Show. The next topic is Countryway Phase Two. Dan, family chair of CPC, or CPA, C?
CPC.
This is before us. Just to recap, we talked about this at the last meeting. We had some questions on it. I assume you're going to give us an update on what the sidewalk's going to look like.
So, we went, I met with several people, had, we've had several discussions, and did some investigation into the, I'll, I'll say, the history of the project, as well as what's happened in other towns. And met with DPW to go over the, the plans, met with the town council to discuss legality of this and the impact on Situate, perhaps. And just to summarize the whole situation, I put together a little timeline, if you will. But 2007, Situate came out with a sidewalk plan that incorporated Phase One and Phase Two of this project. And they were two of about 20 gaps in town that were identified that required sidewalks. The Phase Two was about 3,000 feet. 138 homes at that time, in 2007, were served by the sidewalk project, and it was ranked fifth in number of homes out of the 20 that were identified at that time. It was listed in 2018 Open Space and Recreation Plan as part of the Seven Year Action Plan. It's actually goal number six. And I'll quote from that, "Improve pedestrian and bike mobility and increase connectivity of multi-use trails by extending Countryway Trail to Green Bush." That was Phase Two. Phase One was, quote, in the original application, I'll quote, "to construct a multi-use recreational trail." It also said in there that it would include walking, jogging, and Class Three, Class B bicycle path. It was approved by, in 2013. Phase One was completed in 2016, and part of that project included the design of Phase Two. So, Phase Two was put on hold because of the suit in Norwell. Again, that's about 3,000 feet from Huey Road to Green Bush. Looking through the plans and driving down the street, counting, 21 telephone poles along that stretch.
21.
21. That's my count. When you look at the plans, and when I went over them with Kevin, Sean McCarthy from DPW, there is a clearance that they built in to the design of at least three feet around every telephone pole. And that's ADA requirement. But there's very little space outside of that three-foot clearance in some of the places of the design. When we looked at, Skylar Chek is an architectural design person and does this for a living. And he pointed out, Mass, Department of Transportation, has a project development and design guide that they publish for this type of projects, and it states to follow the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Official Design Standards. Those design standards include a width, which is in consideration of two-way bike traffic, and a width of the trail should be, in most conditions, 10 to 14 feet. It says eight feet may be acceptable due to environmental, historical, structural considerations. The shoulder, it also mentions there should be a shoulder on the bike path of at least two feet on both sides, and that there should be a separation of the bike path from the roadway, either by a physical separation or by a barrier. And part of the reason for that is if you consider two-way bike traffic that is very close to the road, the impact is that the bicycles go in the wrong way, based on the traffic on the road. So, when you look at the, the situation at Norwell, they had, DPW and Norwell had allocated $3.3 million for sidewalks. At the same time, they went to CPC and asked for $1.4 million for trails, and the project was called the Pathway Project. And it was very similar, I think, to the Situate project, to join different parts of the town, to provide access to schools, et cetera, et cetera. And at the time, the Department of Revenue had advised that it was likely, this is a quote, "likely fundable with CPA funds" at that time that they first did this. However, the suit claimed the CPC money was for constructing sidewalks along the highway and not a recreational trail. And the CPA does not authorize highway improvements. Okay? So, what, what the result of the suit was, it depended on the interpretation of whether the pathway qualified as a trail for recreational use, and the, and then the Department of Rec, of, of Revenue recommendation was ordinary municipal sidewalk along a street either, need, I'm sorry, rather than with, within a recreational area or dedicated to a specific recreational use, are not the types of capital improvements contemplated by the legislature. Okay? I'm a little dry-mouthed, so. Give me a second here. And the ruling also noted that trails, these proposed trails were not set back from the street or meaningfully segregated to indicate it would be more of a recreational trail rather than a functional sidewalk. The, and then the quote was, "In consideration in light of the $3.3 million sidewalk project, the pathway, that's the project in Norwell, does not qualify as recreational use." So, given all that, a committee considered that, as well as the risk to the town of perhaps incurring a suit if something like this was brought in, in, up in Situate. And we did vote against the project and voted it down unanimously. However, we do recognize that we feel this is a worthwhile project to complete the access to North Situate along that street for the residents that live along there, and that it should be funded by capital funds out of the town, and the full project should be completed as a sidewalk project.
Karen, I'll let you start.
Yeah, it's, it's most unfortunate that, you know, I, I agree with you. We talked about it. And as much as I wanted to see this go forward, when I went back and read the Norwell decision yet again, after a couple of years, I realized that, you know, based on what we have to work with on Countryway, it's, we would be incurring a real possibility, not only of a suit, but a successful suit. But I would just like to suggest that we need to finish that. And if we have to do it through capital funds, we have to do it through capital funds. It's a shame that we now have, we're lucky we got what we got in through CPC funds when we did it. But we can't do it going forward, unless it's truly a path, a trail, somewhere in the woods, or whatever. So, I'm extremely disappointed, but I have to agree that it's just, doesn't, it wouldn't pass muster, I don't think.
A, a couple of points. I think the, the design is fine for a sidewalk. It does have quite a few telephone poles there. I think there's minimal impact on the neighbors along that stretch. In order to put it on the other side of the street where there are no telephone poles, it would have, I think, a significant impact on those neighbors, because to do a recreational trail with a 10-foot trail and sidewalk, you know, space on either side of the road, you're talking about going in pretty far into somebody's yard. And I know if I was living there, I probably wouldn't like it myself. The other question that came up was, can you move the telephone poles? And the, the statement I heard was, the town could probably get the utility company to move a few poles, but when you're talking about 20 and more poles, that's, they're probably not going to do it at no cost.
More?
No, thank you for all the research. I, I agree. I think, I think, I don't know how you put an eight-foot trail down that side of the road. I just, thank you. I, I really don't have anything to say, because I, I agree with him. I don't think CPC funds. I don't think CPC funds are the appropriate use for that project.
Sean?
That was the one question I wrote, total width. You know, you're going to be in someone's doorstep on some of those cases.
Say that again.
With the total width, you know, you have your buffer and you have your green space, which is awesome. Like, you know, it's just too bad we can't fit it there. It just won't fit, you'll be in someone's front door.
I think the best example that we have in town is what runs along the Driftway. The path along the Driftway where that is totally separate from the road. It has a buffer between where the bikes go and the cars go. And something like that down Countryway would be, I think, extremely difficult to do.
But to Karen's point, I think we, you know, this board needs to really not lose sight of the fact to get people off the road on a sidewalk, that and Stockbridge Road. I'll just hold it rather than later.
So Dan, what's the technicality, are you not, is it no longer on? Are you IPing it?
We're going to remove it from the town meeting. It was voted down unanimously by the committee, eight to nothing last night, or zero to eight last night. And so it'll be removed from the warrant for the meeting.
Any comments from the audience? Start with you, sir.
Yes, Jim Hart, 20 Oak Road. When phase two was canceled, I went around Huey Road all the way down to Green Bush. I knocked at every door on all the streets, all the countryway and all the cul-de-sacs. I talked to 99 people. They all want a sidewalk.
A sidewalk.
Unless we got the public sidewalk. And 99 people I spoke to, 98 signed a petition. And the second thing I'm going to say is, I've been here 39 years. There's been a sidewalk from North Situate Center all the way down to First Parish. And then five years ago, we got phase one put in. So I'm just, I can't figure out why that section of Countryway, that we do it so long. And there's hundreds of kids on those cul-de-sacs. There's eight cul-de-sacs from Huey Road going down to Green Bush. So something's got to be put there, sidewalk. And I know, we went to CPC, that we got, we done the first time. But everybody wants something there. And Countryway is busier than ever these days, especially in that area. They've got the tea station, they've got the Green Bush, businesses increased twofold since I moved there. So I hope we can put on a capital project with the town. So that's all I'm going to say. I have a petition right here, I'm going to need a copy of this. I'm, I'm, I'm the eighth savage.
You give it to Lorraine.
I haven't, I haven't signed it yet. I haven't signed it yet.
Okay.
I was trying to, yes, please.
So my only, my only response, I think we all agree that that's an area of town that needs a sidewalk. That's no denying that. But I think, Dan, Mr. Finley mentioned that, you know, there was a list and it was number five on the list as they were, there's plenty of places like that. You know, I don't know what it is now because I know we've done some of that work. I know some of it was up by Hathley School and some other spots. So it'd be interesting to see where it is on the list now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, Countryway is the main artery of the whole town, as you know. And I think it's like four and a half miles long, something like that. And there's only 3,000 feet left. Two-thirds of the mile left to finish the, finish the length of the street. So that's all I have for the other side.
Great, thank you. The young man on the right.
Mike Stewart, 5 Oak Road. I can remember having a conversation with Jim Hart 30 years ago and going before the town administrator at the time, back in the early 1990s, about getting sidewalks from Shownes, excuse me, down to Reynolds. And, you know, it just, it never materialized. I think, I appreciate the work that CPC has done trying to make this a doable project. It would have been great if that happened. Hard to believe that it couldn't be considered recreational when you're watching fire hydrants and telephone poles on bicycles.
An obstacle course.
I've talked to people in the neighborhood who have walked double straws on that sidewalk with no problem at all. And the bicycles, no kids are getting hurt, there's nothing going on. The important thing is that they're off the road and they're safe. And, you know, I would love my kids to walk to Shownes or down to Reynolds, down to Green Bush because that street is dangerous. It's an extension of Route 123. So, you know, as much as I appreciate the effort here, I, you know, I want to keep this kind of circulating on a capital plan and, you know, seeing it come to fruition. It doesn't make sense where it starts now. I understand the reason for it, but I think if we continue this and get the kids off and if, you know, it's too expensive to move the poles, then you keep the poles there. Kids can get around them, at least in the neighborhood.
Kevin, you, did you have something to add?
I just want to add, I mean, we'd love to see a sidewalk moved there. We get requests for sidewalks all the time. One of the major things that we've been working on is similar to be the same. We're repairing the sidewalks that we have and not necessarily always handicap accessible. And they're in rough shape. Some of them are actually built to road. So we're not, we haven't been taking on any new sidewalk projects. We've been repairing what we have. What we have done is we've been applying for funding through the Complete Streets Program. And that's another option besides CPC. So to bring out for that, we're going to put in another application for it this year. We've gone the past two years and it's been denied. But it's something to really talk to the state rep about as well as our state senator and get them to support it and let them know that you've got petitions of 99 people. And, you know, say, hey, stop in the Complete Streets section or give them a call or write them a letter and let them know and maybe they can do some support for us. You know, Situate has been involved in the Complete Streets, but we have not got any money yet for any major sidewalks. And that'd probably be the best, uh, follow that I can do along that.
Karen, give them.
That's exactly what I was going to say, Kevin, is that, you know, this week, the state legislature did an emergency transportation bond of $18 billion, including substantial funding for complete streets. This is designed, it's part of an ongoing plan, it's connectivity. And what's different from 2007 till now is we have a Green Bush development plan in place. And it is, it meets all the criteria that the governor set forth of connecting to transportation hubs. So I think that I'm happy to help in any way I can, Kevin, with that application. But if, that to me would be the most expedient way to do it. Otherwise, I would hope that we could look, it wouldn't obviously be on our capital plan until the earliest, would be 2022. So I think if it doesn't go with the Complete Streets, we should make it a priority because it meets all the criteria and it's already designed.
If I could make another comment, you know, I spoke with Jim at length. We invited him to our meeting. He brought some folks from the neighborhood in. And I think everybody on the committee thinks this is a worthwhile project to complete.
Right.
It's just we felt we could not do it with CPC funds.
We understand.
Understood, yeah.
Forward given the history of what's happened. But we do recommend that project be completed somehow with some funds.
Thanks, Dan. Okay.
Thank you.
Sean, one quick question for Kevin?
Kevin, how much lineal foot for a sidewalk? Off the top of your head?
He hates that.
I couldn't give an answer, it's going to vary, it depends on.
Well, excuse me, but we, they did get a number from Sean, didn't they not?
Yeah, I think we had 270, whatever the value was when we could divide it by the foot, I don't know.
Dan, what was the, what was the number?
270,000?
No, it was more like 625.
For the estimate, which I do believe is high, was 575.
Okay.
Divided by.
Which included a $50,000 probably in there.
Okay, and then the footage was 3,000?
3,000 feet.
Okay.
From Huey Way down.
Okay, so we're going to move along to the discussion of some special, some other articles. But first, Liz, I see you walked in. Are you here for the parade? Okay, we discussed that and.
I was told to come at the end of the walk-in, I apologize.
It's okay.
I understand, we've already discussed it.
Yeah, so we discussed it and our outcome was, we're going to listen to, there's a meeting tomorrow afternoon at like 3:30. And then we're going to reconvene and decide what to do then, so.
Which is great, we delayed.
Yeah, so if you don't have anything to add, then.
I just wanted to say that we are obviously willing to comply with whatever you recommend. We prefer a postponement over a cancellation.
And that, Jim just rang me, at 6 o'clock, we're going to meet tomorrow. Okay?
I'll be here.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's two articles that we're going to discuss. The first one is special town meeting, article number four, which is Cedar Point Sewer Project. Jim, you want to, who do you want to give a quick outline?
Kevin, you got the information for that? So not to belabor, we had multiple meetings on Cedar Point Sewer. The original recommendation was a pressure system. The board rejected that and directed the DPW to go back and to do a replacement of the existing gravity system. We hired EPG, as in Jerry Kerm, I have to take process to do that design. Looked back, they gave us the estimate. Monday, please, Jeff?
Monday morning, 25.
Monday morning. It is 9.7 million dollars. We think that is high. EPG thinks that is high, but they're being cautious so that we don't have to go back at town meeting more than once. So it's going to be a complete replacement, de-watering. We're using a different type of pipe, too, Ed Will.
Different type of manul.
Just the 35 and the pipe was. So this is a replacement of the system and a replacement of the lateral speaking jobs.
Great, so we talked about this several times, several meetings, and discussed whether to go with, we had a system designed that was not gravity-fed, that had to have pumps at every house. Spoke to the citizens, debated amongst ourselves and decided that we were going to go with the gravity-fed one. We didn't know what it would cost, but we talked about numbers as large as this. And unfortunately, it came in as, as we had hoped it hadn't, it wouldn't. We discussed it several meetings that, actually, this project is fairly lucky because they did get a grant for 2.5 million, two or 2.5?
2.2.
2.2.
Not appropriated, 2.5.
And then the town appropriated 2.5. So there's a $4.7 million payment towards the project. So the citizens will have to pay the betterment for the difference, which was discussed at several meetings as well. So.
We've got the schedule in front of you. The bid, actual bid is due before town meeting. So if the bid number comes in substantially lower than the betterment you mount at town meeting.
We can lower it. Okay.
So that's a summary. I'll open up to the board for any questions or discussion, then we can, I know the advisory committee is here as well to hear this. Are you guys going to go vote afterwards?
Yes.
Any questions, Karen?
No, I think we're pretty clear on, you know, what the direction is. And if we get the bid in, then, you know, it's going to have to get voted on, so.
Can I just do a little roll call to CUCI for the advisory?
Sure.
Jerry Kelly?
Wait, I just have one more question. So on the timeline, so the bid opening would be at the end of April? Beginning of April. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, it says April 4th, April. And then how, and then they would mobilize as quickly as possible?
On availability, yeah, they'd be able to start as quickly as possible.
And the, do we have an estimated construction timeline for that be part of the bid?
I'm pretty sure it'd be all, all season up until September. From the date of award, it was 280 days.
So it's going to be all summer?
Yep. And is, and did the bid have phasing at all? Or like do a section, it was just?
Well, so the construction will be, take a section, put it in, cover it up.
That's what I meant.
Back the next day. So from 7 o'clock in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon, whatever section they're working on will be a mess. And then they'll bundle it up for the night so Kyle can get it up, people get it up next morning.
Right, so during the day, presumably, the point will be pretty hard to be.
Be accessible, but it'll be probably one way, you know, the one way.
The other way.
Into a two-way and it'd be, it'd be tight.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Why don't we do the roll call and then we can ask, see if anyone has any questions?
Sure.
Jerry Kelly?
Here.
Mike Westward? Not here. Dan McGiggin?
Here.
Lincoln Heinman?
Present.
Patrice Metro?
Present.
Andrew Goodrich?
Hello, it's me.
Elise Russo?
Here.
Jamie Gilmore?
Here.
And Linda Ferguson?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sean, did you have any questions?
Just, Kevin, is 20% normal on the contingency, not 10?
It is because we don't know what's going on with the coronavirus or what's happening with the stock market and how tight the jobs are going to be. This is projecting up to April, just being safe so that we wouldn't have to come back.
All right, good. More?
Kevin, was there anything that changed for, in the bid documents, in the preparation of the estimate, the bid documents that you sent out to come back? Because in Woodward and Curran, we were given like 4.8 million as the estimate. So what impacted this?
So if you recall, when Woodward and Curran came up and said a standard sewer project would be about 4.8 million dollars. And he prefaced that by saying, this does not include de-watering. You're in an extremely difficult situation there with the water. It doesn't include, you know, some of the depth and some of the other issues you're going to have here. So he says, this is just a standard deep project we had going on in, like, Stoughton. And we carried the same price as what it costs per foot. He said, it's going to be a different volume up there with the de-watering.
Okay.
He prefaced that in the beginning of it, so he said, this isn't just a ballpark.
So there are some different specs that are included based upon kind of taking a deeper dive and looking to the engineering that's needed to complete it?
Same, similar systems. I think it's de-watering and, you know, what they have to do up there. It's not necessarily, it's not, specs should be very, very similar for the two projects, whatever you can get them to.
So more like the preparation to do it? I'm just trying to understand de-watering, like.
Well, you.
The water out.
The tide.
Right, like just taking care of keeping that out, okay, yep.
Jerry, I'll ask you if you have any questions and then your board, if anyone has any, go ahead.
My name is Jerry Kelly, I'm with 56 Marlin Road. Between a rock and a hard place, you know, you've got a building system, you've got significant I and I issues. And if you don't address it, the fines to the town are going to be multiples of this. But you've got the Cedar Point Association that sent us a letter yesterday that had prior commitments to 4.7 million and 4.4 million for a gravity system. You can see why they'd support it because there was 4.7 million in the bank. Now we commit 5 million over. Each resident on average, about 133 of them, would be assessed a betterment charge of $200 a month. And it's even worse because the first year, you only bill it semi-annually. So they'd get an unanticipated bill of $1,200 twice during the first year. How do you do that?
Well, my only response would be, at several, several, several meetings that we had, we told point-blank that this could cost you, I think, one of the minutes at 42, I think I said 42,000.
August 20, 2019, Mr. Beniani, it could cost as much as $42,000 per household.
Yeah, that would come in as the $200 a month.
And just, this is Curran asked. She would like to take the temperature of the room. We don't have the exact cost of the gravity source system. She would like to know how many people are willing to pay a betterment for the gravity source system. The residents said they are willing to pay the betterment for the gravity source system. Every resident in the room raised their hand that they are willing to pay the betterment no matter what the cost. This is the medicine that we have, so.
I mean, Jerry.
Again, this is, this is the high number. As Sean pointed out, it's a 20% contingency. As we get closer, that will come down, or should come down, as we get closer.
So every resident in the room raised their hands that they would pay the betterment at the 9 million plus number?
Yes, they did.
They didn't know the number, but we, we said it could be as up.
Up as high.
The 22,000 in the betterment question we're asking the same thing.
How, how many residents were there?
100?
Yeah.
100 out of 133.
Or 100 people.
100 residents, 100 homes.
Or Michelle. About half the people.
Yeah, there were, I don't know how many houses were, but it was, and it was over, I mean, we had many meetings.
Two or three meetings.
Different people coming in. And not, I think there was one woman, one woman that said once that it would be much. And then she was even swayed to go say they'd rather have this, so. Because if you remember, there was a cheaper system that was already designed and ready to go.
Okay, Ralph? Okay, Ed Will?
We asked, we, it was, it's on, it's on tape, and we said, it's, this system that you want is likely to cost maybe four million more. And they're still getting the benefit that other people who are getting sewers will not get the benefit of, and that is that grant plus the money that the town allocated. So they're gonna have to pay the difference.
They're gonna take the half of the, half of the full betterment.
Yes, and I think, I think, given the, the, the heat on that issue, that they, they're getting a good deal.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Anybody else on advisory have a question? Lincoln?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just for Kevin and Ed Will, just a quick technical question, which is, does it matter? I mean, you know, we've seen projections that Cedar Point, whether they like it or not, is gonna be having water on the perimeter, or something on the basis, you know.
I summed that up in any of the meetings.
Somewhat, somewhat.
It's a technical question.
Which is, between the gravity and the, and the, you know, and the cheaper system, the pressurized system, is each equally resilient to that kind of situation?
Well, we, we had this discussion prior, and they said, "The gravity system will slowly stop to open up in lead. The pipes are improved, you're not doing, going with clay pipe, you're going with a piece of plastic, SDR thirty-five, and you're going probably with a nineteen-foot section, so you have less joints. One of the things that we do have in this new plan is to wrap all the joints to try to keep all the INI out as it goes, as well as making modifications to the manholes to make them more, the manholes to make them more flood resistant, if that makes sense." You're, you're right, but we're, we're averaging saltwater there right now.
Understood, yeah, understood. Yeah, I mean, and the only other thing, just a quick comment, which is, when I said a person, which is, if, you know, that there is some, some liability on the part of the town, not necessarily, not just the property owners there, and that presumably, at some point, someone goes, "No, as much as I hate to say it, I don't think, I don't think some of those homes are gonna be, be there at the end of this betterment," you know, and I just think it's reality, sealed surprise. So, you know, if we take that in tax title, then it is on the table, but nevertheless, this is, this is what the, what the residents out there want. I do think there's some liability to the town for this, because as much as it pains me to say it, I don't think some of those homes are gonna be there, at the end of this betterment. Anyway.
Anyone else from advisory?
I just find it hard to understand how.
I'm sorry, your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Patrice Metro, I'm the advisory on two-two-three back road. It seems like it's a lot of money. We, they, nobody's said, nobody's written that they're definitely gonna, you know, they're happy to have this betterment, have they? They just expressed it strongly in these meetings. It seems like, you know, the four or five hundred people go to town meeting. It seems like we don't have a choice as a town. But man, that's a few people agreeing to a huge betterment for a hundred.
It is.
I don't, I think that's, it's more than a few people. So there were many meetings with many people, different people coming to each of them.
I know a few people at town meetings.
Oh, oh, right.
Yeah.
Well, they're just voting, they're, they've already voted the other two, so the four point seven is already going towards the project.
Yeah.
And they're just voting to be able to charge the residents the rest of it, so there's no tax.
Probably to appropriate the balance.
Right.
Yeah, I guess it's just a huge balance, that's what.
Anyone else on advisory?
Yes, Dan McGiggin. So normally, you do a betterment when you fund this type, the town funds this type of project for the people. What, where do you determine what type of interest rate you're gonna charge these people, or is that determined, or?
Five.
Does it match what the loan or the bond is?
I think it's, it's five, statutory five percent.
Good.
We asked Nancy. Jerry, hold on for one second. Karen, did you have one?
Well, just to, to Lincoln's point, I wanted to say that when it was, the, the original design was designed specifically in mind of the challenges out there. The pressurized was advised as would be the most resilient for that particular spot. The sewer commission, the sewer department, NDBW, before we voted on this, strongly advised against going in the direction, against a.
Gravity.
Gravity system, thank you. The board voted to go in the other direction, because it was the strong opinion of the, of the community that would have to live there, that they did not want anything to do with it, and that they were, and it was at least a hundred people, twice, that said, "We will pay, we will pay," and, you know, represented it from the Cedar Point Association. So that, you know, you're right, you bring up some very concerning points, but that's where we are right now, and it would be, I think, disingenuous to start over in any other way, because we went through that whole process already.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding, this night, Michelle, Michelle Loring, sixty-seven, I use both names. It's my understanding that this bid includes the cost of hooking up all the houses, all the lateral costs, which is probably about a billion dollars.
Correct.
Is that, is that normally done in a sewer contract? I know it wasn't done when the sewer was first put in, 'cause I was there. 'Cause the lateral hookups require easements from each property.
And we're gonna be requesting easements.
But if you don't get it, then that work can't be done. It would be done by the individual homeowners then.
I think at the time, the way it came up, as I recall, is typically on a lot of these projects, we run it right to the edge, the property line edge, and then bring it over. Where it came up before, we were talking about a betterment, and we would have better control of bringing it right over to those houses at that time, when it's there. And also, you know, if there's bypass pumping or anything else going on, it allows each house to be hooked up, because they're gonna have to break the old pipe out of commission, and put a new pipe in, and then connect up. So it made more sense to complete it and do it all at once. And as that came up, that was one of the biggest areas people were saying, or at least residents at Cedar Point were saying, where a lot of the leaks were coming from, the services.
So it does include all the lateral?
It does include the lateral hookups.
As well.
Yes.
Okay.
And I just have one other question.
Sure.
I think perhaps this project's coming in really high because of the use of the GRP fiberglass pump. Is that being recommended to be used throughout the whole plant?
GRP fiberglass pump.
Pipe, pipe, instead of PVC.
No, we're using SDR thirty-five, I believe.
Okay, you're not using the pipe that was estimated by the. This is a sealed pipe, is it?
It's a SDR plastic thirty-five.
It's not the same pipe on the, that we use on the pressure system, is that what you're asking?
It's a, it's a different pipe. We looked at that, we looked at all options for maximum INI protection, so that we could do the INI, and what we came up with is using the SDR thirty-five, which is standard pipe, and then also wrapping each individual joint. A typical section of pipe, I believe, is nineteen feet, six inches, and then every joint has a little push-on joint, which seals it. But then on top of that, they were gonna put something like Saran Wrap, a little fancier than Saran Wrap, around the pipe edges to keep it watery infiltrated.
Thank you.
I just want to stress, this is an estimate right now of twenty-five percent. It is probably high. As Sean pointed out, we're carrying a twenty percent contingency because of where we are. We will have a bid number for town meeting. We do anticipate it will be less than this. How much less? We don't know. But we can't go back to town meeting again and ask for more money, 'cause we'll miss the construction team. So we're asking for what the engineer thinks is the high side of the bid. We'll get the actual cost, and we can make that adjustment downward, but we want people to know this, this is the scope. We think it's gonna be less, but this is, this is the outside.
Kevin?
And just as we had said to Ms. Loring, we will be coming out and sending something out in the near future, requesting easements to do the pipe, you know, so that we can do the services and do it all at once. And with that would be the restoration.
Based upon the board's discussion, every dollar that this goes down comes off the residents' costs, not the towns we do, so we'll drop it down until we get underneath how much we have. So whatever this comes in less, it's savings to you, as opposed to the towns gonna take that saving, put the rest on you, so. If it comes in at seven million, the savings are also the residents'.
Great. All right, Jerry, last one?
Just one last clarification, and, you know, this is just doing this as we sit here, but if you take as a given that there'll be five million dollars as a gross betterment charge that has to be charged, and a hundred and thirty-three homes, and a five percent rate on the betterment, and assuming that you do it over twenty years, not thirty years, that comes in on average sixty thousand dollars per home. Two hundred and fifty dollars per month per home on the betterment. If that's what the residents want, we'll support it, but it takes my breath away.
I know.
We, we went through it. Yes. That, that is the indication we got from, from all meetings that we had. All right, so the next article that we are gonna discuss is kind of a joint meeting, has already been determined, the.
CPC.
Phase two, the CPC, so I don't think we need to do that. Anything else from advisory? Are you guys gonna go?
We're gonna leave.
Come on, hang out with us, Jerry.
That we were here for.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you guys for coming.
Too much excitement tonight.
Check the room. Thank you for coming.
All right, the next topic.
Good night.
Hi, Mr. Goodrich.
DPW green contract for green sand filter.
Contract.
Ah, so less controversial.
Oh, you, you think? Really? You want my question?
No, so, so as we spoke about, this is a green sand filter for well seventeen A, and the green sand filter will take out the manganese and iron from that well and supply a renewable water source that'll, that'll help us in the future. So we went out to bid on it, the plans and specifications were completed. We had three bidders. It was an extremely lengthy process. The low bidder is Winston Builders for the base bid for the green sand filter, and then the add alternate for ninety-five thousand dollars. We want to remove all the transite pipe, which is a concrete asbestos pipe that leaves there, and replace it with a ductal lion pipe out to Tac Factory Pond Road.
That's in this bid? Sorry.
Yes, that's in this bid also.
Okay.
And that'll take care of, that'll take care of everything, yeah.
So where's the pipe going, towards the?
It goes from the pump, out the back in the woods, and it comes all the way up and around the road, and ties back into, into Tac Factory Pond Road.
So it goes up towards the houses?
Yep.
And then out down the street?
Yep.
And that's how we pump the water down?
Yep.
Isn't that uphill?
Yep. That's why we got a big pump.
That's why it's a pump.
It's a pump.
Says peanut gallery. Just too easy.
Kevin, we authorized, what, eight million dollars?
Eight million dollars for this project, so.
How much was the design?
That has already been awarded as part of the engineering contract, and they don't have it off the top of my head.
That was like one, two, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was like one point one, max, and we run to that, but.
So the total price will come in at seven, as opposed to the eight that we kind of thought?
No, we, we actually added additional money on top of that for the engineering. That was a separate, that was a separate allocation.
Okay, so the, the six is?
Yep.
From the?
Yeah.
Good. Any questions from board?
I'd just say that's a good example, too bad the Cedar Point left. This is an example, we estimated high, the bid came in much lower than what we anticipated.
And they're close?
And when will this start?
Well, we will award it. We already got the confirmation. We're gonna meet with the builder, you know, and get, request a schedule. It all depends on the lead time. We'd probably award it officially sometime in the next week or two, tell them to get all their information, probably be, you know, thirty to forty-five days out. It depends on the contractor. If the weather's good now, they may wanna get a jump on it and start ahead of time, and if they are, it's all the better for us, because, you know, having this up and running will be, will be great for the system.
More?
No questions.
Sean?
No, no, I guess not, thanks.
Karen?
Just two quick ones. You have, there's a list on it for an add alternate. What's that, and is that included?
So the total price is the five-seven. The add alternate is for ninety-five thousand dollars, and that's removal of the transite pipe, the concrete, the asbestos pipe that we wanna remove from there and put in with new ductal lion pipe, up to Tac Factory Pond Road, up to the room three.
That's a good thing. And then I just wanna ask the general question. We just, we've got the draft of the water study, and if I recall correctly, that study, this action supports the direction of that water study, like?
Without a doubt, yes, without a doubt. And it was one of the main things to, to jump on and get the green sand filter up and running, 'cause it, it gives the plant a lot of flexibility. You know, we had to use it last year, and we shut the plant down. We needed this, and we used this water, the water came in and went through a, a temporary green sand filter. But, you know, we have to meet DEP requirements, and it's a much more permanent with a building and chemical feed systems and everything else there.
So it protects our water source and gives us flexibility for the main plant?
Without a doubt.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the audience? Great. Do we need a, a motion on that? Yes.
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract for construction services associated with the construction of the green sand filter at well seventeen A to Winston Builders of Westboro, Mass. for five hun-, five million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine dollars, and no sense. Second.
Second one. Ms. Canfield, further discussion? One quick question, have we used these people before? Any reviews on them, or?
Yep, we had.
I did look them up.
We had the engineering firm look through them. They've done this work in the past, they're qualified, we have qualifications to do the work. It's, it's also a state project, because there's, there's other trades involved also, so they have to be DCAM qualified. So they are qualified by DCAM, so.
They're a Massachusetts company.
It's a Massachusetts company. It'd be no reason why we could disqualify them if they're DCAM certified.
Seeing no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yay.
All right, next topic is the Citrofire Department, Chief John Murphy.
Good evening.
Murphy, how are you?
Good chief. Good.
So what are you gonna start with?
I'll start with the donations.
Great.
Okay. I have three donations I'm asking the board to accept, generous donations. We had a two thousand dollar donation from Petrosili Insurance and Justice, basically we give as a donation every year. Second donation is from Linnland Insurance and Justice for a thousand dollars, and also a donation from Columbia Gas of five thousand dollars.
Great. What are you gonna use it for?
What we're doing is we're going to improve the fire pump on the boat we purchased. The boats we haven't built. We have a pump on there, but we want an improved pump. The bid came in pretty high, so we're looking to get donations. I also have a grant below that for $4,600 I got for emergency management towards the pump. So right now we have about half the cost, and we're looking for other ways to fund this so we will not be using any tax money to upgrade the pump.
This is the pump on the boat that we haven't got yet?
Correct.
Because it's not strong enough first time?
The original pump, and Sean, you know, it's like the biggest Pacer pump we could find. It's good volume, but to get something that's more impactful, this is what we wanted from the beginning, but the bid came in high. So we're looking to improve this pump, not quite to a fire truck standard, but capability of about 600 gallons a minute foam capability, which is what we promised the town. So we're working on some donations, some grants, and some other funding that, so we don't want to bring it back to the taxpayer.
So they're not going to put the other pump in there and replace it?
Right, so we'll get some cost back for that. So that pump there, some of the hydraulic tank, it's hydraulic driven. So we've been working with, we've been out to see the. Pingham Harbor Master Boat. The Waymouth has a boat. We were recently down in New Bedford, and they have a large boat. We were actually, this Nimit marine down there has been very helpful with us. We've coordinated with them as well as a boat builder and the pump company to come up with the best solution. So it'd be auxiliary pump. That'd be diesel driven. That'll have full capability that we need. So we've actually worked with, if you want to make normal donations, and Columbia Gas is a great partner of ours. And then we had conversations, and anything you're looking to do? I said, "We're looking to do this." And they said, "Well, let's see what we can do." So they committed $5,000.
Excellent. Sean?
Sean, who will install stuff like this up in Maine? Or will that be done in New Bedford by a?
So we talked to both on this, and right now it looks like it's going to be done in Maine. New Bedford contractor that we've been getting a lot of information from, he said, "Listen, if they can't," he actually knows Stuart Workman who's building the boat. They know each other well, and he was down there working on somebody else's boat, the same boat that New Bedford has. It's a 38-foot, I forget the name of the moose boat. It's a 38-foot aluminum fireboat that New Bedford has. And there's a similar one in there. So he brought us over there. We talked with the gentleman and just getting some ideas, you know, refining exactly what we want. So with the information we got from Dolly, I mean, there's probably multiple emails, I mean, dozens and dozens. So we've been going back and forth with the phone calls. So we have it down, what we want, the best pump we can get. We want diesel driven. We don't need gasoline in the boat. I've talked to Boston Fire. I've talked to several other people that have gas-driven engines and nothing but problems. So we're going to go diesel, Cummins diesel, which we have in all our fire trucks. So our mechanic's a Cummins certified diesel mechanic. So we should be able to do all the maintenance internally. And it's a good pump. It's going to be, it's a Dolly pump, which is one of the most common ones on fire trucks. It's just a smaller version of that. And the other thing is it's a single screw engine, single screw boat with a valve for it. So maneuverability is going to help us. So it's really the best application. We've done a lot of work to research what was best for the boat, for the town, for our service. And so we're just trying to get some of the funding and some creative ways.
Stainless steel, right? Stainless steel?
Stainless steel, what?
Not bronze, the pump, not bronze, certainly not aluminum, but stainless?
It'll be a bronze pump.
Really?
Yeah. That's what they all, Sean, I don't think anybody makes a stainless steel pump.
I'm just thinking long term.
Yeah, but they say bronze. You know, we'll have a flushing system for this as well.
Good.
So anytime we use this, we train on this, use it for a fire, we're going to flush it anyway, even though it's bronze.
All right.
So that's, you know, and you get to dissimilar metals, too. You start having problems with stainless steel and bronze and all that, so.
All right.
So.
Any other questions?
Please. So John, chief, would the donations that you're putting forward today cover the cost of the additional, the upgraded pump?
We're about halfway there now.
Halfway there.
I do, and Stephen and I are working on the other half right now. So we do have, it wouldn't be any taxpayer money. You know, I have other donations, and he has some resources, too. So that's what we're working on now. But we're confident we're going to get there. And this boat's going to be delivered about mid-June. It's going to be a great asset to the town. And I know the town, the adjacent towns around us are happy to have this boat, too, because they don't have a lot of capability as well.
Right, so just one more thing, Mr. Chairman? So I just want to make sure I understand this. So I didn't realize that when the bid went out. Let's see where this goes. That the $430,000 boat didn't have a pump that was. Adequate.
It has a pump, and it would be adequate, but I want more than adequate.
Okay, but we were authorized by the town to buy the original boat for 430 that had a pump?
Correct.
Okay. So when this boat is delivered, we may not have, what happens if we don't have?
We go with the other pump.
We go with the other pump?
Yeah.
And it's adequate?
It's sufficient. It's a lot better than what we have. It's, but I think this is an opportunity to get, you know, a real impactful pump that will, the foam capability, foam puts out these blowfires. And to have that type of capability with this pump is going to enhance this boat's capabilities.
And that pump wasn't originally specced when we put it forth for the town to review?
We did put it in the bid that this is the goal for this type of fire pump to be on. It's not the exact pump, but this.
It was like an add-all kind of thing?
In a way, in a way, we put this is going to be a town, a town, a piece of equipment we'd equip for the contract. And we didn't anticipate the contract coming in as high as it did. And Stephen also has, he's going to be selling his other boat, too. He'll have the funding coming for that at some point. But, you know, we're confident, we're both confident we'll be there and be able to do this.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just, and I know we're here just to accept the donation, so I feel like we opened up a can of worms here. We have $7,000. I wanted to write that number down, too, total. That year, $5,000 from Columbia. Is it eight? I don't know, we don't have it written anywhere, so.
It was a grant for $4,600, so we have $12,600 right now.
$12.600 coming in that we have to accept right now in donations?
Well, we have 8,000 donations and a grant, emergency management grant that was specifically for the pump, is $4,600 that we have a grant. You don't really have to accept that, but we're looking to accept 8,000.
So we have to approve 8,000 in donations tonight?
Correct.
Got it, okay. That was number one. And we have 12.6 set aside right now, including that eight.
Correct.
So how much is this new pump? So my concern is like sort of what you said, right? So if you don't raise the money, you had made a comment that you're already making plans to take the proposed pump out and buy the new pump. What happens if you don't have the money? And what's the, are you still going to be able to trade in that original pump for a new pump and get any money for it? Because you can't have a boat without a pump.
No, we will not have, this boat will have a pump. This boat will have a pump. So we're confident in conversations with him. He's going to give us some money back for the original pump that we had, which I'm guessing is about probably $5,000 or $6,000.
Even if it is used?
It's a brand-new pump. They haven't put it in yet.
So that's my point, like if you don't raise the money and you get the boat that has a pump, I'm going to use a saying that I shouldn't, that ship has sailed, right? That's, we're just staying with that pump. Am I not making sense?
Not necessarily. I mean, that could be upgraded, that could be upgraded.
I think that's more of a question. But you're going to lose the value of the pump.
But it's only $5,000. I thought it was much more expensive. So it's a $5,000 pump, and you want a $25,000?
Pump that's on there is about a $5,000 to $6,000 pump. It's a Dolly pump, I mean, not a Dolly pump, it's a Pacer pump that, you know, we got the biggest one we could get when we put the bid out. And that's, this is something that we're working on since the start to try to improve this pump because, and that we can be better. And unfortunately, the bid came in very high.
So if they don't get it done, they're going to have the current pump in the specs, and they'll have to raise another $5,000 in donations?
We can, like, the intakes and all that are going to be put in. They can use for both pumps. So, I mean, the intakes, like the water intakes, the feed with the sea chest and all that's going to be done, no matter what pump it is. So it's not a huge difference, but we will, all the things, the hull fittings and all that are going to be the same for both of them.
Same, same.
Exhaust, yep.
No, I'm not going there.
All right, so we'll accept the donations tonight, and you'll keep your fundraising hat on.
I'll get this done.
All right, can I have a motion to accept the donations?
Move to accept the donations of $8,000 to the Cituate Fire Department as noted. I don't have anything in front of us, like who it all comes from.
Sorry.
Brad, okay? I think that's fine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Now, what, chief?
The second part is the letter I sent you.
Took a lot of work to take a donation, huh?
I know.
The second part is the letter I sent to have the request from the Board of Selectmen to allow the Fire Department to support. The gentleman behind me, Norm Duffy, Captain Norm Duffy, firefighter Don Lizfield, and firefighter Robert Quinn, along with Deputy Chief Tommy Bell, retired, purchased a 1924 fire pumper that was a second pumper, motorized pumper for the Town of Cituate Fire Department. This came in about a year after the original. The first one was 1923, which had the accident and killed three firefighters. So at that time, here were the first two pumpers here. So these gentlemen found the pumper, they purchased it with their own funds, and they're requesting CPC to restore the fire engine to its original specs. So it was, you know, so it could be a showpiece, parade piece, but also teach people how the fire service first started in the Town of Cituate. So in order for CPC to allow them to move forward for potential funding, we have to have a place to store this fire pumper during renovations and also after. So basically, after the renovations are done, if they did get the funding, they would give the Fire Department this truck for display. And they would also raise the funds in the future for any repairs that are needed. So there's no cost to my budget. It's a matter of finding a place for this pumper. It's about the size of a pickup truck. It's not the size of the pumpers today, so, and, you know, I can find room for that. So I'm just trying to make my commitment for the department. And that's the, the board allowed me to do this to get a valuable piece of history for the Town of Cituate, to bring it back to its original beauty.
How much are you going to ask CPC for?
61, no, CPC's $56,500.
$56,000?
Yes.
And where you want to keep it?
Right now, I'm going to keep it at Station 1. Potentially, when Station 4 gets done, I could keep it down there. But right now, I have room at Station 1 to put it there. You know, I'd like to find a place where it could really be displayed, maybe at one of the stations. So we're looking at that in the future, but right now, I'll keep it at Station 1.
Questions, Sean?
I just had a comment. No, that's, I'll go last. Let everyone else go first.
Why?
Maybe you'll go last. Karen?
I could take out.
No, it's a super cool piece of equipment and history and all of that. I, I'm just a little concerned about where you're going to put it.
I have an answer for that.
Oh, that's why he's going last. That, I think it's a wonderful project, and I think it would add a lot to the culture and the history of the town, but we got to find a home for it.
You know, you're right. It's a 1924 piece of apparatus we had. I think we've got to find a way to try to pull this off. And the least I could do is to make sure we have a place for it.
Let's see what Sean has to say. Will this be used for parades and things like that? I mean, how often will it come out?
It's functioning, yeah, it's a functioning vehicle. So, you know, so that's the goal, that's part of the restoration.
Oh, it does function? It will, when they.
You know, driving.
You can't drive it now, right? You can? Okay. Would it pass inspections?
Don't ask what you don't want to know.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, I think the question of, you know, where to put it so that it is visible, accessible, and that it's not, I mean, we have restored, CPC has restored a few chaise and carriages, and they get put away into the Cudworth Barn, and then they don't come out more than, you know, once a year, so, you know, I think.
I want it to be visible as much as we can, so.
All the parades.
Right now, during the restoration, I'll keep it there.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I think we got to at least start with that, but we'll find a place for it.
More?
I think it's great. I know my biggest concern was where, so I'll wait to hear Sean's idea.
Tell us, Sean.
Because I think, you know, making.
You wrote down Seawing.
W R Berkeley, which is an insurance company down in Connecticut, has a magnificent restored old fire truck. I don't know if you remember, I sent you a picture of it when I went there. So give them a call if you need any advice as to who to, you know, look at, but, you know, for restoration purposes. But I think it would be great to have it. I love, it's a great piece of history, so if we can find where to put it.
Anyone else?
You know, all right, okay. First of all, this is wonderful, things like this, all right? To make things even better, some family here. My father's cousin is Robbie. Tommy Bell is my godfather.
Tommy, Robbie, Billy, and Joey are here?
You know, to see these guys come together, some of these guys use this. If you look at the backup, and I heard about this coming. I just think this is so cool. Parades, all kinds of events that could be used for. Couldn't ask for a more dedicated group of people to do something like this. I really look forward to seeing what it looks like when it's done. And if you don't have a spot to put it, you can put it in Paul Young's showroom. How would that be? All right?
Did you ask him already?
Yeah, I asked him. Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, that's some place we've really done the road once it's finished. But right now, we have to have a place for the park. We want to make sure it's going to be kept in the future.
People should see it, and it's great. It's wonderful. Thank you very much for everyone stepping up.
Can we keep a town-owned asset, though, in a private area?
Probably can't. I just thought of it two seconds ago, but it was just like, you know, we could figure it out.
Do a lease. Okay, well, Jim said we can, so there you go.
We just have to sign a agreement.
Yeah, okay, great. Just checking, lease for a dollar.
Great, so what do you need from us exactly?
Permission to allow us to be able to store it and support this project. As I say, again, no cost to my budget, but we do have to find a place for it during renovation.
So was it, this wasn't actually Cituate's, right?
Yeah.
It was.
It actually was Cituate?
It was. Yeah, it was our second pump we ever purchased, second motorized pump we ever purchased. Again, it was.
I love that.
Great. All right, can I have a motion to support this project and find someplace to store the renovated fire engine?
Move to support the proposed restoration and storage of the highly relevant Cituate Fire Department's engine four?
Correct.
Four fire truck. What is it, 19, built in 1947?
24.
24, why does it say 47?
Retired in 47, was retired in 47?
Oh, retired in 47, okay. Second.
Second by Ms. Cant, second by Mr. Harris?
That's all right.
You want to be in the notes?
No, no, that's all right. No, that's all right.
Second by Ms. Cantfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you guys for taking on this project.
Thank you.
Really nice.
It looks like a lot of work, but it'll be worth it.
It's the good stuff we get to approve.
Thanks, Murph. All right.
It will.
Can't wait.
Can we ride on it?
He didn't know where it was going.
Okay.
I know. I'm like, he could have put it in his house.
Friends of Cituet Dog Park. Lisa Hoffman, how are you?
Good, how are you? I have to enjoy this treasure for the Cituet Dog Park as well.
Dan, how are you? Good seeing you.
We're not here to ask for any money. We're just asking for permission for a few things.
We're going to talk about it for a long time.
No. So, first, we would like to ask for permission to install a permanent metal donation box within the park for people to leave donations there. While we have a website where people can go and make donations, the park, as you've probably heard, is extremely popular. It's very heavily used. And myself and other board members who have been there have talked to people who have said, you know, "I always want to make a donation" or, you know, "leave money because I used waste bags." And, you know, "You don't have a box here." And I get home and I don't think to go online. So, we are asking for permission to put a permanent donation box there. I have a picture of what an example of that box would look like.
Can we look at it?
Yep, it would, oh, thank you. It would, it would be installed in a cement base, which we've talked to Sean McCarthy about putting in there, and he would help us out with that. We obviously are going to be paying for this out of our own funds, including any materials needed to install the donation box. But we just think that it would be a great way to have a consistent donations coming in to offset the maintenance of the park, which is our responsibility as far as the waste bags and replenishing mulch and things like that.
Good. Jim, what do you think about the safety of that? What do the police departments think?
I think at the most, it's an attractive nuisance. It's not really going to have a lot of money in it. They'll have to keep an eye to make sure they're not drinking it. If it starts to be a problem, we'll take it out.
Okay. Questions on the board?
I guess that was my question about that. Yeah, I just, I have an observation.
Thank you.
I hope that the dog park people keep trying to educate the people who use the dog park about the behavior of their dogs. I got swarmed down there one day and only one person came to my aid, and I had to take my dog out. And I was literally, four or five dogs were on top of me. And I could not believe that only one person came and took his dog out of the scrum that I was in the middle of.
Oh, gosh.
I did leave an email message on your website, and I never heard back from anyone. But do you keep track of complaints like that and try, I know you can't police it, but, you know, the more education people get about, you're not down there to be on the other side of the dog park while your dog is down with a pack of dogs.
Right.
And...
So, I apologize that we didn't get back to you.
No, that's all right, but, you know, I...
Because I manage our social media and I try to respond to people in a, like, usually the same day.
Because I went right back and I recorded it.
I don't know how I missed that.
Because there's no, I wouldn't call the police, obviously.
Yeah.
Well, shouldn't our dog officer be, he's down there, isn't he? Jim?
Not on a daily basis, no.
No, but wouldn't he be someone that should be, like, monitoring it a little bit?
If you do that, it's a formal complaint and you're going to go through the whole process.
No, I know, but how often is he swinging by to kind of help?
I honestly have no idea. I've never seen him when I've been there, but I'm not there every day.
Right, well, maybe that's like one step, right?
I don't know how frequently he comes.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just curious how often he swings by, that's all.
I think it would be beneficial if he was stopping by periodically so that if he did see things like that, not that someone has to make a complaint, but so that he could say, "Hey, you need to keep a better eye on your dog," or just self-pleasing.
I think that would be very helpful.
Well, we don't know that he doesn't.
Right.
That's true.
No, I'm not saying that he doesn't. I'm just saying that, you know, I think it would be helpful if he were there periodically, and maybe, maybe he is. But, to your point, as far as our responsibility, we do a weekly, on our, on our social media Facebook pages, we have a weekly park safety and etiquette tips where we are trying to remind people in addition to the rules that are posted at the park, just other things. And one of them, you know, we have talked about, you need to pay attention to your dog. Like, this isn't social time for you to be, you know, chatting with a bunch of people or on your phone not paying attention to your dog. We also have one of our board members, Donna Culbert, who is the owner of Donna's Do Right Dog. She's a certified dog trainer. She, with Cituet Public Television, produced a PSA that we've posted on our social media pages. It's going to be posted. We just revamped our website. We're going to get it posted there. And she, this kind of leads me to one of our next asks, but she has also offered to do complimentary classes at the park, you know, park etiquette or how to, how to read your dog's behavior.
Right.
So that you know, you can intervene if you see something that maybe is going to lead to someone getting knocked down or a fight or something like that.
Yeah. Well, I guess it's no different than the playground when my child was little. There were kids running all over the place and no one watching them, and then you're watching your kid. And so, it's, I know it's similar, but I just thought I'd mention that.
No, thank you for sharing, and I apologize that...
My husband goes there all the time, but I'm like, I'm not going back.
I have, you know, we've, we've gotten so much positive feedback.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we've also, you know, not just about the dog behavior, but about the owner's behavior, you know. They're picking up the poop, which is huge. I know, like, at the Kingston Dog Park, that became a really big problem. People were not picking up their dog's poop. And I, I'm not aware of that being an issue at our park. I know that if people see someone else's dog go, because everyone kind of is getting to know each other, you know, they'll say, "Hey, your dog just went over there," you know. So, I'm hoping that that continues.
It's very popular. I drive by there all the time, so it's great to see it being used.
Thank you.
Mark, what do you think about the donation box?
I'm fine with it. I think, give it a try. My only observation is, as a nonprofit treasurer, is, you know, exposing yourself to, you know, cash and that kind of thing. That's my only little red flag that sort of pops up is just, you know, the, the risk that you put yourself at as a treasurer and as a nonprofit, that's all. But it's not my, that's...
Well, I, looking in the back, I think it's great. It's always packed. Looking at the backup, though, I'm not sure that they need our permission because it does say in the agreement that they are limited, they, they should raise the funds, and it should be either through gala events, transfer station, collections and stuff. So, are we approving just this, the structure?
You're approving letting them put the box on.
On the land.
Okay, but not the concept, I think is fine.
Right. I mean, they, they would need your permission to go can, you know, like a can for the transfer station, but this is the place, the permanent structure.
Okay.
On your property, it's not property, so that's why they need your permission.
Okay. I think it's great.
Sean?
Yeah, why not? It's, you know, help offset the costs. What is the proper etiquette? I, like everyone else, I drive by. Isn't it a place to go? Just let your dog go? I mean, they're all fenced in. What, are you supposed to walk them?
There are rules.
I have no idea.
So, it is, it is an off-leash park. And one problem that we encountered early on was that people were bringing their dogs in the park but keeping them on leash.
All right.
That's actually detrimental to the safety of all the dogs, because when dogs that are off-leash see a dog that's on leash, they want to go check that dog out, and that dog will then feel threatened because he doesn't have the freedom that those dogs have. So, we've had to educate people, you know, like, when you go to the park, just let your dog off the leash once you make it through that second gate. Also, you know, like, as we said, keep an eye on your dog. People, we have the water fountain. It's turned off right now for the winter, but when we had the fountain on, people were bringing in their own bowls, filling up the bowls, leaving them alongside, and then all the drugs were drinking around, drinking out of them. And then I started getting emails about, "My dog was at the dog park and has kennel cough now. My dog has kennel cough, kennel cough, kennel cough." Well, we traced it, bless you, because they were sharing the water. The whole purpose of the fountain we installed is that the water doesn't sit there, and they're not all sharing it. It flows, they drink, and it's draining at the same time. So, we had to educate people about that as well. So, I mean, it's a learning curve for people who have never brought their dogs to a dog park before, you know, there, there is a period of learning. But I, I think it's really run smoothly, other than the few little hiccups. And, you know, we're hoping that in addition to raising funds for the maintenance of the park, we can get closer to building the small dog park because we get asked about that a lot.
So, the only thing I would say with the, with the donation, is just, just get the money out of there frequently so that nobody ever thinks that there's any large amount of fund in there, because invariably someone will go in there with a hammer and do something silly.
Yeah, this is a pretty, it's a very sturdy. I mean, we've done our research. We've also checked, like, Kingston doesn't have this exact same one, but they have a donation box.
Great.
Provincetown at their dog park has one. So, it is a pretty common thing to have. So, hopefully, there won't be any...
Is there a motion for them separately?
There isn't?
I'd like, I'd be happy to make one.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Moved to approve the installation of a donation box at the Cituet Dog Park. Second.
Second by Mr. Harris? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to buy a dog today?
Good luck. Is there still a line?
Jeez.
What's, I'm sorry?
Is your dog?
Yeah.
Just making sure. A little guy.
Yeah.
So, we also, and I alluded to this before, we'd like to make permits available for events to be held at the dog park, much like we get permits from the town to collect at the transfer station. We'd like to hold events at the dog park for educational purposes as well as fundraising. In the past, we have had our big Halloween fundraiser at the Barker Tavern because there was no dog park. So, this was, that was our, our big fundraiser. But we're still going to do big fundraisers, but we thought for Halloween, it would be fun to do a costume party for dogs at the dog park as a fundraising event, but also just a fun thing for the community. At these events, we would like to be able, in addition to having the collection box there, to maybe have a table set up where we can give out information and, and take collections, you know, in person. But we also might have a local vendor like Reese's Homemade Dog Treats or, you know, Wish Bones or somebody like that that wants to have a table there where they're either selling items or giving away promotional items, things like that. So...
So, wouldn't you just come before us with a special?
Well, so that's, I didn't know if we have to come each time or if it can be set up kind of like the transfer station where, you know, you go in and you sign out a date that you want to have an event. No, we can't, it can't be that easy.
Lorraine, what do you think?
How many events are you planning on having, you wish?
No, I mean, a handful, not, not a ton.
If it's a handful, I would say go with the special event process.
Do the special event process.
Yeah, because you never know what you're going to attract. It's going to change, right?
Yeah.
Based on what your event is. So, then we have to consider traffic, what the date is, all that sort of stuff.
So, when we have an educational event planned, come to you guys with the details.
Give Lorraine a call. She has the application.
It's all right, right there.
And I might ask the selectmen if they'd be willing to waive the special event before you.
Whoa, don't get crazy.
Hey, hey, hey!
After breaks.
And just, just because we've never done this before, what's the lead time, you know, between, like, when we come to you?
We like at least a month before your event. Two months, probably. I mean, if you know you have four events for the year and you want to plan it on that day.
Okay.
Are you having one within the next two months? Halloween is...
No, Halloween's a little ways away. We'd probably want to have one of the educational events there. Donna would like to do one for training us, but...
Sounds great.
I'll be mailing the application.
Okay. All right, thank you. And just not to backtrack, back to the donations, but in addition to the drop, the box, because there's areas for signage here, we were going to have a QR, a QR code put there so that when people didn't have cash, they could scan it.
Nice.
So, I wanted to make sure that that's okay.
That's great.
Is another option. And, and then we were going to put a banner, a banner with a thermometer, a fundraising thermometer, much like the Chamber of Commerce does for the parade and Heritage Days, to show how close we're getting to our $100,000 goal for the small dog park.
That's great.
So, is that, that's all?
Yeah, it's going to be awesome.
Okay. I know, I know advert, you guys don't want advertising there, but as, I'm hoping as long as it's promotional materials, we're okay.
Did we say we didn't want advertising there?
It depends.
So, I have a question. In the agreement, Jim? There is a reference that there is a committee where there are town employees that sit on the committee with the dog park group, who are...
And Sean.
All right, because I think a lot of those questions could have been answered before. Yeah, so, I'm just going to, I think that committee needs to meet, right, quarterly, right? I'm just, there seems to be a lot of stuff that if the town committee were consolidating, you guys are meeting collectively as it is constructed, that a lot of that stuff you could have already had answers for.
Okay.
Great.
You're right.
The only concern I have, and I think the dog park is great. It's truly a, you know, a social item for both the owners and the pets. We just have to watch the parking on, because it's getting so full that people are parking on the Driftway. And that gets to be a little bit hazardous sometimes. And then, then they're congregating to talk out there. So, somehow we got to, you know, put up a sign or something or try and keep people in the, the parking lot or have some overflow spot.
Right, well, I mean...
Because Jim, is there, there's not supposed to be any parking out on the street there, right?
That's possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the short term...
People, go ahead.
In the short term, if we could direct overflow to Widows Walk or to the McEckern Lot, you know, that would be great. But in the meantime, we are talking to Sean McCarthy, and we're going to be in touch with the Horsley Witten, the architects who designed the park, to see if we can make some changes either to the existing park or to the plan for the small dog park to utilize some of that land for an additional parking area, because it is tight.
I think that's prudent, yeah.
So, but in the short...
Also looking at the entire Constitution Park area, they want to try to put some more parking in that area.
That'd be good. I, Jim, and I would suggest that the dog officer and Sean both be a part of that committee. I mean, I don't understand why they're not, why he's not either. Just makes...
So, do we need a motion for the second request?
No, because we said...
You're just doing the special.
It goes through special events. Do you have a preference where we direct people for overflow parking? You know, and McEckern and Widows Walk are also town property, right?
Right, so Widows Walk, we don't want to...
You don't want to cross the street.
Cross the street. We don't want to not have parking for the golfers either. I don't know, what do you think? Jim, where's a, a spot?
I mean, of course, this is Constitution Park, but that's a small lot. Right now, it'd be Widows Walk until someone picks up and you start having all the golfers.
It's just dangerous.
I have a suggestion. I think people should park down in Cole Parkway and walk their dogs to the dog park and walk back. Dogs like to walk.
They do.
They don't just like to be in a, you know, running around in a confined space.
Right.
So, I think, I think dog people should put their dogs on a leash.
Encourage people to walk.
Yeah, it's a nice walk, the Driftway from the harbor down. It's really nice.
Well, it's also good, too. One of the etiquette and safety things that we posted is, don't bring your dog that's been cooped up all day directly to the dog park. Let them get some of that energy out before they go in.
Exactly.
Jenkins closed on the weekends, and that's...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's your deal. Hurry.
Okay. The next, you want to take five?
No, go on.
You're going to get the worst articles. Okay, so now, the discussion and the vote for the town meeting warrant articles. So, have we, have we actually voted?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so we...
In your package is a list of the articles?
Yep.
In the handoff package?
So, we have to do, we have to vote to accept, oh, we have to vote, I thought we voted in favor. Didn't we do in favor?
You only vote, you vote in capital, but you have to be up there. And then you vote to put the number on, but you didn't...
Okay, so we have to go article by article to vote in favor or against.
You need to do all of them, or you could do them individually?
Well, I don't think we have the same opinion on all of them, but we'll...
Yeah, you could maybe agree on a bunch, and you could vote for ones you don't agree on.
I tell you what, we're going to skip this and go to the drain layers licenses until Ms. Campfield gets back.
Okay.
Can we...
Yep, let me get there. There we go. Okay, let's see.
So, we have a discussion and vote for a renewal of a few drain layer licenses.
Wouldn't you like that motion?
Please.
All right. Move to approve the renewal of the drain layers license to the following businesses: E.L. Margates &amp; Son Inc., Cobra Enterprises Inc., Jeffrey Morse, Walsh Management, and Site Pro.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's four to zero. And the renewal ones, or that is the renewal ones. There's two new ones.
Just get there, Tony. I think we, I see one. I'll do the first one I see here.
Gallagher and...
Gallagher Corp. Move to approve the new drain layers license for the Gallagher Corp.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Move to approve the new drain layers license for Rebco Incorporated. Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
So, those last two were five, zero. Why don't we just do the liquor licenses while we're at it?
Vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license. Move that the board, a selectman approve a one-day wine and malt license to St. Mary's of the Nativity Parish Center on March 21st, 2020, from 7:00 to 9:30 p.m. for the Coral Arts Society of the South Shore. Second.
Second by Ms. Campfield. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Move the board, a selectman approve a one-day wine and malt license to the Black Apron for an event at the G.A.R. Hall on March 21st, 2020, from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, five, zero. Okay, so now we'll go back to the discussion vote of the warrant articles. So, we need to vote them and then we need to assign. Are we going to sign them tonight? Is that the intention?
I wasn't planning on that. You can have to, you can if you want.
How many more meetings do we have? Two?
You have at least two.
Okay. All right, so we'll just vote them and we'll... Oh, we've been thinking about this.
Tony's going to take them off.
You can have the last four.
I mean, I thought you tried to assign the last meeting, but Mara was against it.
Yeah.
But somebody's defended me, I'm sure.
That was me, Mara.
If I look on the TV.
Mostly me. Okay, so we've got four special town meetings, unpaid bills. We've got the balance for the IT, the connection to connect the other two buildings, which is coming from which budget line for IT department to, to, where's that coming from?
It's coming from Water Pidions Reserve for Capital and Sewer Pidions Reserve for Capital and Sewer Retainedранes. And it's going to the Water and Press Capital, the Sewer and Press Capital.
So, that's to bring the water and the sewer onto the fiber, fiber optic network. Okay, and then the last, the third one is the CPC funds, which they didn't allocate the right amount at one, at one year. And then the fourth one we talked about tonight was the Cedar Point request to fund and then allocate a betterment. was the Cedar Point request to fund, and then allocate a betterment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Depending on what the board wants to do, the dollar value between the estimate of 9.7 million and what we have left after the contracts that are outstanding from the grant and the other award is $5,427,205. Is that the amount that you want in the warrant?
That's my first.
And so I, in the draft that I have, I put that number or lesser sum?
Yes.
So the range is $5,427,205. Which article?
Four.
For a special town meeting.
Okay, done. Five, four, two, seven, two.
So, does anyone want to hold any of those and discuss them? All right, can we vote for those four? We have a motion to vote in favor of those four articles?
A motion, I'll make a motion to approve, to vote in favor of special town meeting articles one, two, three, and four as written.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, great. All right, now we'll go to the annual town meeting. And why, there's, there's 25 of them or so. Why don't we just kind of take them in blocks? If anybody wants to hold, the first one is the compensation. That went up by cost of living. Is that the first time we've done that?
That's, um...
Town clerk.
Town clerk.
Oh.
Don't get excited.
What?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, somebody should look up when that, that number was created.
Dawn of time.
Okay, so town clerk, cost of living.
She says she doesn't have time.
The dawn of time.
Oh, dawn of time. What are you like, I don't have time?
She wouldn't say that, she doesn't.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I make a suggestion that maybe we vote the consent agenda? There's a whole bunch of them that we can just, and I don't think there's anything on there that we're...
He just went to it, too. One, two, three, and then when you want to hold, just hold, and then you have to hold.
I'm gonna read it from this sheet instead of the other one, and anything you want to hold, say hold. So compensation for town clerk, a cost of living, reports, capital improvement, fiscal year operating budget, waterways, golf, waterwa, wastewater, transfer and water enterprise funds, stabilization fund excess levy, revolving fund, number 11. Is that?
That was 11.
That's 11, but not for all of them, right?
Yeah, we're creating...
Right. So for all the ones that we currently have. CPC allocations, and the project, does anyone have any, we should probably look at those separately. Why don't we skip that one? I don't know if we're all gonna vote in favor of all of them. 13 is the reconciliations for CPC, the occupancy tax, 14. Anyone want to hold that?
No.
No.
The local option sped reserve fund, so the school wants to set up a reserve fund for this, special education.
Can we hold that, just for discussion purposes?
Sale of Council, so ask the town to allow us to sell the Council of Anasium Building and the Minut Fire Station. Ask the town to have us lease the cell tower, the ninety, chapter 91 money, consent for that, any questions on that? So ask the town to allow us to go into intermunicipal agreement for the sewer district. Let's stop there for a second. So all of them except number...
Twelve and 15.
Thank you. Twelve and 15.
Do we, are we gonna hold 19 as well, or no?
I don't think...
You want to wait?
I'm fine with that, unless someone wants to hold it.
Did you vote 21?
I didn't get to that, I'm just gonna do the first, first 19.
I got distracted.
So, can I have a motion to vote in favor of one through 19 with the omission of 12 and 15?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
By Ms. Conley. Further discussion, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous, five to zero. All right, so now we have the zoning ones. The first one is signs, and the second one is the restoration of non-conforming structures. Do we have anyone that wants to discuss those more?
Number 21, may or may not.
Yeah, the non-conforming structures, the ZBAs meeting on the 19th, and they'll decide whether or not they're going to indefinitely postpone that or postpone the meeting floor.
The planning board has ordered against it.
Which one?
Twenty-one.
The non-conforming structures. The ZBA isn't having meetings, so they don't have the time to redraft, so maybe they'll come forward with amendments, maybe they'll decide here for the next town meeting.
But the planning board voted against it?
Yes.
Can we hold that off then, Mr. Chair?
You can hold that and make that, right, move to make a recommendation at the meeting.
Okay, so we'll hold off on that one. How about 20? Does anyone have any questions on the, the changes just to the wording of the?
Were they making any changes as of the advisory board the other night? Are they making some?
The advisory board voted four to three in favor of the article. The discussion was around temporary signs have a 60-day limit.
Yeah.
Some of the, I would say the three advisory board members that voted against it don't think there should be any limit.
Right, right.
It just should be wide open. I think the planning board and the other members think we should have reasonable restrictions on how long you can put a sign up. You just can't throw up a sign and leave it up forever.
Indefinitely.
Right.
Well, because then it's not a temporary sign. I mean, by definition, we, we wouldn't have temporary signs.
And that doesn't run afoul from free speech?
All right, we're gonna hold, we're gonna hold that as well.
Limiting content.
We're limiting placement and time and duration.
We can have reasonable restrictions on...
Forever and ever, okay.
Okay. Number 22 is the time of the meeting, change of general bylaws. Number 23 is the animal control bylaw. Any questions on that?
Is that just to raise the fines?
That's just to bring them in conformity with the statute.
Okay, thank you.
Number 24 is the revolving fund, so this is setting up, one, two, three, four, five, five new funds, and actually six, right?
According to the ZBAs, you don't have time.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. So let's vote those, those three real quick. 22, 20, 22, 23, 24. Can I have a motion in favor of those?
So moved.
Second by...
Second.
Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
So those are all five to zero. All right, so now we have the four petitioner articles. The first one is the right to farm. Discussion on that one? Seems kind of...
I have no objection to it, but I don't see the point, quite frankly.
I, I think I'm missing something, because I don't know why we're doing it.
It's redundant, isn't it? It's just adding more language to our bylaws with something that already exists.
Right.
So that they can put up a sign saying we're a farm-friendly town.
Right.
I, I think...
Jim, are we missing something on that?
That's the same argument I had for like three or four years in Boell and that by law they passed it. I don't think it gives any more protection or less protection. It does color out to be more visible to people that, you know, when someone decides to do farming next to them, it's more visible that you have the right to do that as opposed to...
Fighting and...
...by law, and fighting it, it says right there, you have a right to do that. But most of the things that you have a right to do on the right to farm by law, you have a right to do that.
I didn't like the way it was written.
I just...
Yeah.
I didn't see it made much difference.
Can we hold off, and I, I have, I have a question for someone that I wasn't able to contact on that.
How about the reduce the occupancy tax? I think that's gonna be IP'd because we're voting on it.
Right.
Before.
Yep.
So can we all vote in favor of that?
I move that the Board of Selectmen supports citizen petition to amend the general bylaw to reduce the occupancy to 4%.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion, seeing none.
Aren't we IPing that one?
Well, if it doesn't...
It's gonna end.
Okay, yeah, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous. How about the appropriation of the $5,000 to South Shore Community Action Council? We had a lot of discussion on that. Personally, I'm not in favor of it. I think it's a good cause, but I don't think, I don't think that's, this is what should happen at town meeting, so...
I agree, I don't think we have a right to tell our taxpayers where to donate money to, but I know we lost this a couple of years ago, but I still maintain my position.
Any other comments?
I agree.
Okay. Can I have a motion to not support Article number 27?
Move that the Board of Selectmen does not support the citizen petition to appropriate $5,000 to South Shore Community Action Council. Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Opposed? I'm sorry, not opposed, abstaining, I'm sorry, it's getting late. I'm not opposed.
So, 0-4, one abstaining.
I'm staying, I'm sorry, yeah.
Sorry, 9:20 is early around here.
Four in favor of, four opposed to the article, zero in favor of the article.
One abstaining.
Correct. And the last one is the, the resolution to support Medicare for All in Massachusetts. I'm not in favor of this, because I don't think this is the right venue to do something like this. So whether you, whether you feel supported or not, I don't think town meeting is the one that, that can come across, and 100 people that show for town meeting all of a sudden say a town supports it.
Yeah, I think it belongs on a ballot.
I agree. If that's, if they want to do a ballot campaign.
If whoever presents it makes that clear, I just don't think it's the right process.
Yeah.
All right, can I have a motion to vote in not of support of Article 28?
Make a motion that the Board of Selectmen not support Article 28.
Second by...
Second.
Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none. All in favor of not supporting?
Aye.
Aye, so it's five, zero. Okay, so we're gonna hold 21, 22, and 25. Let's talk about number 12, CPC.
Wait, not 22.
I'm sorry.
12, 15, 20, 21, and 25.
Right, so we're, we're gonna go back to 12 and 15. 20, 21, and 25, we're gonna wait to the next meeting, because we want to look up some more stuff. So on...
They gotta wait till the next meeting? I'm confused about that. We have to publish the warrant.
Okay, so then we'll vote it at town, we'll vote, we'll vote it at town meeting.
Okay.
Is that what we need to do? It's either now or town meeting. Floor?
Nancy?
Yes.
If the selectmen don't want to vote on one, two, three, four, five articles...
No, no, we're gonna do 12 and 15 now, but definitely 20, 21, and 25.
They don't have to give their opinion, yea or nay. You don't have to vote in for or against, they just are gonna, whether or not to remove them from the warrant, and they're over 25th meeting to keep all these articles from the warrant.
Yeah.
So what do we do?
Now their vote, they're, their support or not.
If you don't have a petition, you can just make a recommendation at the meeting.
That's what we'll do on...
That's what we're asking, we can't make a recommendation next Tuesday, it's too late.
And when does the warrant get printed?
Your recommendations aren't in the warrant.
No.
They're not in the advisory book?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, when is the warrant printed? When is the warrant at town?
Tomorrow, we publish tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
The advisory committee will, we have a long march right now.
Yeah, so...
They don't put our, this stuff in there anyway.
We just presented it at town meeting, so...
All right, so going back to 12, there are all the required percentage... Allocations, thank you, for the three areas and the administration. Then there is the $716,000 for the... This is the payment of the, the debt related to the turf field project. There has to be an article for that every year?
Yes.
To pay that?
But this is the fir...
We'll incorporate the debt service.
We've never had it before.
Right.
Right, because you never get debt service.
Right.
So what if we vote not to pay the debt?
You, you, the town would have to pay the debt one way or the other, we'd be forced to raise it on the recap.
Yeah, compared to town.
Really? I thought when you voted to bar with it, you voted to pay for it.
That's what they have separately in the article.
Okay, so we've got that one, we've got the Steverman Skate Park, we have the Mordecai Lincoln property, and that's it. The other one is gonna be removed. So does anyone have further discussion on any of those three? Actually, it'd be seven.
Nope, I don't.
Okay. Can I have a motion in favor of those seven articles, seven items?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve Artic, approve Article 12 Community Preservation Fund appropriations.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, so number eight will be removed.
Right, number, all right, let me amend to say one through seven as presented.
No, second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, five to zero. And the last one is 15. Mara, did you want to talk about the reserve fund?
Yeah, one second, I want to read it, because I had a question about it.
So this is, this doesn't allocate any money, this is just setting up the fund.
Right.
And the way that money will get into that fund has not been established yet. We're hoping that the school will send money in there when their budget has a surplus.
Well, that was, I think that was my question. So this is just establishing the fund, not determining how it's going to be funded?
Yeah, not putting any money.
Okay, all right, then I'm okay with it. I think it's a good idea, I just, you know, I need to understand how it's gonna work.
And there will be some, there'll be some participation on both, both fronts, but it hasn't been determined yet, and that'll be figured out in future.
Okay.
We'll just support Article 15 then?
6644?
Whatever it is, I don't know.
Sean made a motion, I seconded.
What was the motion?
To support Article 15?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you for allowing the discussion.
Great, so 20, 21, and 25, we will discuss at a future meeting if needed. All right.
Sean.
So the next item, we did that, we did that, we did that. So liaisons, other business? Anyone have any liaison reports?
Do we do these one days, Tony?
I do.
Oh, we did.
Yep, real quick.
Yeah?
Yeah. Very quickly, just want to remind everybody, the last master plan community session, a little bit held at Gates at 7 o'clock on March 25th. Planning board met with the, with the consultants, and it's gonna basically give an overview of where we are, and give everybody an opportunity to really have their, you know, final say on this, and then they'll start drafting. So that's been a really good process. And I also just wanted the board to know that Economic Development Committee has been very active, which I've mentioned before, and this last week, Hall Economic Development Committee invited Situit to come to theirs and talk, and begin a conversation about doing some regional plans to encourage South Shore economic development.
Okay.
Yeah, so RJ and I attended that, and we're gonna, we're gonna work on a couple of things, but one thing that right off the bat they were thinking about is in the, to work with the chambers to do maybe a sequential restaurant week, so that, you know, the first week of March, it's Hall, the second week, GoHass, the third week, Situit, to sort of drum up, you know, cross-fertilization during the, the downtimes. So that sort of was very exciting.
Good idea.
So that's just starting. That's it.
Anybody else? More?
I just want to let the board know that I attended, Citro Community Christmas put together a nonprofit gathering this Saturday, where they brought together all the different nonprofits in town to talk about how to better collaborate, some of the challenges of fundraising, some of the challenges of, you know, getting volunteers specifically. So I think one of the major talking points that came out, two things, were there's not really a central portal for folks to find information, so I talked to Jim, so I hope that we can kind of work and collaborate with them to try to at least give people links, you know, so they can find places to volunteer, so there just seems to be this kind of vacuum of central area to find out, you know, where to participate and how to get involved. And then secondly, And then secondly, at the end, I know the Affordable Housing Trust sent a letter in recommending that we keep up an affordable component in the sale of Article sixteen, and in that meeting this weekend, affordable housing bubbled up as almost the most important issue in town that people of all our nonprofits are concerned about. So I just wanted to share that because it bubbled up kind of unexpectedly through all the discussion that happened through the workshop, and I was surprised that it came up to the top. So obviously, they're hearing a lot of feedback from people in need, from elderly who want to stay here, and I just think we need to keep it at the forefront of our minds as we move forward, you know, with all different things. So it was good, I, you know, thank Kim Stewart for pulling everybody together, people really appreciated it.
You know, what we should do is, you know, we kind of lost track of where we stand in terms of affordability percentage for the 40B aspect of it, and we do have a couple of big projects that are going in that are going to be available and affordable, especially the apartment complex over on downtown Forest, so...
So there's, there's a new housing production plan that's being completed, and it's in the process now.
It's up there every year.
Yeah, so we'll get that.
Can we go to, just make people aware of that?
It's still around five.
The thing that happens is we, if you approve a project, you have one year to issue the building permits. If the building permits have not been issued within a one-year period, those units come off your inventory, and they don't go back on until occupancy is issued for those units. So what happens is, project gets approved, it gets appealed, and ends up coming off, coming off. And Maura had actually contacted me about that meeting on Saturday, looking for an update on the social worker position. We got a very poor response from that. Bob had actually put it on Indeed.com, still kind of, so he actually went and registered individually with eight colleges and universities with masters in social work programs, put permission to post on their boards, so he updated me today, we've now got fifteen applicants.
Good, good strategy.
For Indeed and those, so he and Drew will review those and start scheduling.
Oh, good. Great, thank you.
That actually happened by law, really the difference.
Jim, what percentage are we at, about?
About five.
Just under five.
Yeah, it's just under five.
Six range, yeah.
When we hit that, that project brings us within...
That project would put you at ten, I believe.
Yeah, it does.
Just under, I think.
It gets you right there.
And we're talking about three A?
An issue is, it has to be, I don't want to prolong this, but in order to get you the number, it has to be rental.
Right.
Okay, because when you do, people watching, if you do a hundred units of homeownership, twenty-five must be affordable, twenty-five count towards your affordable number. Same number of apartments, a hundred apartments, twenty-five must be affordable, all one hundred count towards your affordable number.
Oh, right.
Because, because they are looking to promote rental housing.
Rental housing.
The only way to get to that number, if you're doing ownership, you add twenty-five affordable units, seventy-five market rate, you, you increase tiny rental, whereas you do one big apartment, and not that people like it, but one big apartment...
Maybe that's what we should condition it as, rental property, not...
And the general public don't know that. You know, what, at the planning meetings that we've gone to, they have no idea.
Yeah.
So we are, we are, there is a plan, you know, to at least be able to stop, you know, development that aren't under our terms, so. Karen, did you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to mention, I, the Superintendent's Search Committee is moving very quickly, and they voted last night to interview eight candidates. They got a very good response, a very diverse group of people, and we have meetings all next week to try to keep this, it's moving at warp speed is all I can say.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, I can't say that for the Charter Review Committee, but we are going to meet next week. Again, we had a mishap in one of our meetings, but we are going to get on that next week and get going on that. But we did have one very good meeting. Couple of other things coming up, there's a few Sister City films that are coming up this week and next week, and the groundbreakings that somebody mentioned at the beginning for the senior center, and then also for lost apartments in the upcoming weeks. And then, of course, there's the annual town meeting on the thirteenth. All right, how about, any correspondence?
There is, Mr. Chairman. We have a letter reminding us that March twenty-eighth, from ten thirty to one thirty, at the Saint Mary's Parish Center will be the maybe third or fourth Situit Accessibility Awareness event, and it has, looks like over twenty different vendors that will tell about services available to people in town. It's a great event. We also received a letter from Mast dot that informs us that our chapter ninety apportionment for fiscal twenty twenty is at five hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars, and will be incorporated into our existing ten-year chapter ninety contract. That's handy. We received a letter from the Cohasset Conservation Trust with some concerns about bashing beach property and to ensure that anything we do with the agua culture pilot program does not infringe on their rights.
Did, um, wasn't Sue going to look into that, Jim? Because I, I know she looked into it, and when she looked on the maps in town, it did not look like it was on that property.
She has a, a comment to add to that.
Is that what you remember also, Karen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. The final paragraph from this is, we're hoping that the Selectmen and advisory review the location and make sure that everything's nice, and they're happy to meet with us if we have, if they have, if we have questions or they have questions. You mentioned the Sister City movie is going to be on this Thursday at seven. The Kio, what's the, Lorraine, the communal services? I'm not on...
Kios right-of-way, clearing foliage around the...
Oh, okay. It was written in very much bureaucratic legalese, and I couldn't figure out what they said.
Which you should know how to read.
It's like, it's, they're going to be spraying and cutting and making sure they can run. You mentioned the senior center, groundbreaking, and then Maura mentioned the art, a letter from, about Affordable Housing Trust concern that perhaps if, they've asked that we amend the article, no?
No, we didn't.
Didn't? It's a very odd letter.
It wasn't odd, it was hard to...
Respectfully questioned, this, should this property be sold to a developer that it should be conditioned to a minimum maximum sale unit that would have affordable to a household using, it, it actually...
I think some of it must be cut off.
Yeah, it got cut off. And then the last...
Basically, they're just asking for it to be conditioned to have an affordable component to it if it's sold to a residential developer.
Of all or one? Both, mine it in?
No, just, just the senior center on Brook Street.
Um, okay, yeah, we might want to have...
Brook Street, yeah.
Are these not...
No, Brook Street.
And the final, which is, I think, in everyone's packet, is a letter from the Cedar Point Association with a number of ideas that they would like us to consider at future meetings about...
I think that's for the coastal visioning process, right?
Yes.
That's that entire...
They want us to incorporate it into the coastal and to the master planning. So I will, I will take those for the planning board, and that is all.
The next item is to approve the minutes.
Make a motion? Oh, actually, I won't move it because I wasn't here.
Vote to accept the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting held on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cantfield, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's four with one abstention. And lastly, well, first we have to go to exec, are we going to executive session before we adjourn?
Yes.
So I'm sure there's something.
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chair?
He has to declare it first.
So I declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding the senior center. The board will, will go into executive session and will not convene an open session after the meeting. Can I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session at nine forty PM pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one-three, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to the senior center litigation, because an open session discussion would have detrimental effect on negotiating position of the town.
Not to return to open session.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, do roll call, I'm sorry.
August, when you have...
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Cantfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
And do we have to make a motion to adjourn and sign documents after that?
Yeah, you can do it. I just...
Okay. Right. And I, let's take a quick...